Good evening and welcome. This is a public hearing of the Zoning Board of Appeals of the City of Evanston. The zoning ordinance directs this body to hear applications for major variations, special uses, and appeals from decisions of the zoning administrator. Depending on the type of matter, this board will either make a final determination or send its recommendation to city council. Melissa, will you call the roll, please?
Mary McCauley.
Present.
Lisa Deacon.
Here.
Scott Gingold.
Present.
Mary Beth Burns.
Here.
Violetta Cullen. Marina Aravalo. And Kirill Miranchev.
Here.
And with five people, we do have a quorum tonight. Also present tonight are zoning planner Melissa Klutz and planning and zoning administrator Scott Mangum. This is a formal meeting and there are rules that govern our proceedings. Most importantly, only one person speaks at a time so that all testimony may be accurately recorded. Anyone who wishes to address the board regarding any matter on the agenda will have the opportunity to do so at the appropriate time. Our procedure is to hear from the staff on the documents filed and then receive testimony and other evidence from the applicant or appellant. Next, persons who wish to make a statement regarding the matter may do so at that time. Any person with a legal interest in property located within 500 feet of the subject property may present evidence, reasonably question witnesses, or seek a continuance of the hearing. When all supporting and opposing testimony and statements have been heard, the applicant or appellant will be given the opportunity for rebuttal or a closing statement. Then the board will close the record and begin deliberations. All testimony will be under oath. Although we do not apply the strict rules of evidence, please limit your testimony or statement to your personal knowledge. When you address the board, please state your name and address and sign in on the provided sheet. Our meetings are audio and video recorded. Please make sure that you are at a microphone when asking questions or making statements so that you can be properly recorded. All proceedings are subject to broadcast at a later date. Any matter not concluded at tonight's hearing will be continued to our next regularly scheduled meeting. There are four items on the agenda tonight. 710 Main Street here and 3318 Grant and a whole lot of addresses on Ashland, Payne, and Dewey and Kedzie. Okay, so everybody is here. Can I have anyone who is going to speak tonight, please raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth throughout the course of these proceedings? Thank you. We are going to start with the meeting minutes. Has everybody had a chance to review them? Any changes, modifications?
I move that we approve the meeting minutes.
Second? It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. And I will note that those not voting were not here at that meeting. Moving on to the first item, new business is 710 Main Street. And Mr. Mangum, will you please read that into the record?
Yes. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, members of the public. The request this evening is for a special use permit for a type-two restaurant, reprise coffee roasters within the B2 zoning district and within the ODM Dempster-Maine overlay district. City staff and DAPR have both reviewed this request and are recommending approval for the special use permit. Enter this staff report along with attachments, including the application itself, business summary, sustainability practices worksheet, plat of survey, image of the property, aerial view of the property, zoning map, and the DAPR meeting minutes excerpt. That concludes the summary of the staff report and we're available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you. If 710 Main Street would like to come up and present your case, tell us a little bit about what you're proposing and if you can start with your name and address, please. Business address is fine.
Good evening. My name is Adam Peranto. My address...
Business address is fine.
Business address is 950 Green Bay Road, Winnetka, Illinois.
Thank you. And tell us a little bit about your project, please.
My project is a coffee shop, cafe. We are a locally roasted coffee cafe provider. And we want to operate between Monday to Friday, 6:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., and Saturday and Sunday, 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. We're providing locally roasted coffee, sustainably sourced, and resale of items such as bakery and wraps and bowls and small plates like that.
You roast your own coffee?
We roast our own coffee in Winnetka, Illinois.
Okay, so it won't be roasted in Evanston?
It will not be roasted in Evanston.
And what about the baked goods? Are they made on-site or are they going to be brought in from somewhere else?
Nothing will be made on-site. Everything is going to be brought in from somewhere else.
So tell us about the delivery plan. When will food be delivered to the restaurant?
Everything, the delivery plan is we're going to have a main storage downstairs with a freezer that our bakery could be kept in for an extended period of time, so only bakery delivery will be like once a month there, cutting down on delivery times. And we'll be going through the back door and everything will be delivered to Winnetka and distributed out from there. Or if it's something such as milk, will be delivered once a week to keep everything fresh.
Generally, time of day that it will be delivered?
In the morning, but we have back access to the cafe, so we won't be holding up any traffic on the Main Street.
So you'll take your deliveries in the back?
Correct.
Okay.
So your deliveries will come through the large parking lot that's behind the Main Street shops?
Correct. And we have allotted parking space available, too.
Right.
Yeah.
You have one allotted parking space?
Correct.
And how many employees will be on-site at a given time?
Two at the most at a given time. And we are hiring a lot of locals, so they either walking, bicycle, train, the train station's right there. And yeah, and the other could use the allotted parking space.
Okay. And are you familiar with Evanston's litter collection plan and litter pickup plan?
The recycling and compost, yeah, we plan to utilize the given infrastructure of Evanston to compost our coffee grounds as well as recycle our applicable items.
Okay. And the city also has a litter collection plan and a litter pickup plan. Have you read those documents and can you comply with them?
I have not, but I am confident I could comply with them.
Okay.
Are you planning on making any changes to the outside of the building?
Besides an awning, no.
Will you have outdoor seating?
We plan to open this fall at some point if we're able, so outdoor seating doesn't make sense for us at this time. We plan to revisit next summer with the city.
Any other questions from anyone? All right, thank you very much. Are there any comments for this project from anybody here? Come on up.
Yep.
Was someone's...
Yep.
Sorry.
If I can have your name and address, please.
Good evening. My name is Sean Chinskey. I'm at 714 Main Street. I'm the owner of Goods of Evanston, so in addition to running my frame shop, I also own the building that Adam will be moving into, so he will be a tenant of mine, assuming this project moves forward. So I'm here to encourage you to vote for the project. In addition to being involved with my store, I've been very involved in the business community on Main Street. I've been part of Main Street Merchants as an officer. I was part of the TIF Advisory Committee. I also was on the committee to get the SSA put in place. So I've been very active in trying to do things to keep Main Street a vibrant area. And one of the things that I've done, I think, has kind of the most impact as an individual is I'm very selective in who I have as a tenant in the space. And so the space was empty for a year before I met Adam and learned about his plans. I said no to quite a few people before I said yes to Adam because I think that our neighborhood is only as strong as the collective offering of what we have. In fact, I came before the zoning board for the overlay district. I don't know if you folks are familiar with it because it was a couple of years ago, but to prevent office use in retail spaces because I think it's important that we have good retail businesses. So his product is phenomenal, so I think the folks in the neighborhood would really enjoy it. I've asked my customers, what would you like to see here? And quite often, they say a coffee shop because for all the coffee on the other side of Chicago Avenue, there's really not much for commuters traveling from the west. And the other thing I think that it's going to do for the neighborhood is it's going to provide a social hub that we're lacking. So people during the day will have a place that they can congregate. The restaurants are great on our block, but that's not the purpose that they serve. So I'm very confident that Adam is going to be a great contribution to the block and create a lot of activity, so I encourage you to support his business. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else here who would like to speak about 710 Main Street? Come on up. Give us your name and address, please.
Good evening. I'm Alan Price and my family owns property from 700 to 708 Main, so we have all of the property to the east of where this coffee shop would go. And we have been active landlords on that street since 1999, and our philosophy has always been to find good businesses that will bring street traffic and the right kind of clientele, people who will enjoy the experience of being on Main Street. And we, I think what we really need is a facility that will bring more street traffic to Main Street, and I think this would be an excellent contributor to that. So I would be very much in favor of this kind of enterprise, and I hope that you'll cooperate and provide the right zoning variation to do that. And I've also been president of the Main Street Merchants. I was president for five years, and it's so wonderful to see with the Main Street Dempster organization, the SSA, we're finally gaining the momentum and the full-time commitment to improving the commercial health of that district. I think this will also enhance that. So that's what I would like to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Last call. All right. Mr. Peranto, did you have anything final you'd like to say? Or you don't have to, it's okay. But if you'd like to, feel free to come up and say something. Okay, great, thank you very much. And with that, we will close the record and thoughts from the board.
This is a garden variety, special use application of the type that we regularly grant with conditions, and this seems like to me an excellent project for a neighborhood that seems to have unanimous support from the business owners from that neighborhood that came to speak tonight. So I think they are in agreement with me that this would be a good addition to the neighborhood. And I do think the point that the other neighbors, the other business neighbors made about increasing foot traffic to this side of Main Street is really well-taken. So I'm in favor of the proposal with the usual conditions about hours and parking and all that.
I agree with Scott. I feel like this side of Chicago Avenue does need like a gathering space, a coffee shop. I ate there last night. It's a great community and I'm looking forward to trying your coffee.
Anyone else? I happen to agree as well. Let's talk quickly about hours before I go through the standards. Brothers K's hours are 6:30 to 6:00, and Starbucks' hours are from 5:00 to 9:00. So where do we want to land on hours?
I don't know how late they might want to serve, but to be able to have, you know, an espresso after dinner at the restaurants...
Right.
...close at hand wouldn't be bad. So I would not want to restrict it to too early an hour in case they do want to expand on their timing.
How do we feel about 6:00 to 10:00? 6:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m.?
Good idea. I think the restaurants on that row close about 9:00, 9:30.
Okay. So everybody buy into that? Fantastic. Let's go through the standards. There are nine standards for a special use. Number one, it's one of the special uses specifically listed in the zoning ordinance. It is, so that standard has been met. Number two, it's in keeping with the purposes and policies of the adopted comprehensive general plan and the zoning ordinance as amended from time to time. Some of the goals of the comprehensive plan are to retain and enhance a diversity of businesses in areas and desirable locations of economic activity, and this is certainly one of those areas. One of the other goals is to promote growth and redevelopment, to strengthen our economic base. And certainly getting a vacant storefront, again, occupied and then with good foot traffic is a key component of what we're looking to do in Evanston to strengthen the economic base. So that standard has certainly been met. Number three, it will not cause a negative cumulative effect when its effect is considered in conjunction with the cumulative effect of various special uses of all types in the immediate neighborhood and the effect of the proposed type of special use upon the city as a whole. This is, I think, one of the only special uses on the west side there of Main, so I don't believe that there will be any negative cumulative effect in this particular part of the neighborhood. Number four, it does not interfere with or diminish the value of property in the neighborhood. In fact, it will obviously increase the value of property and increase the value of property in the neighborhood because there won't be an empty storefront anymore, and there'll be good coffee. So there's that. So that standard has been met. Number five, it can be adequately served by public facilities and services. It's certainly close to both the Metro and the CTA lines and can be reached by bus routes as well. I think there's a divvy stop over there, so there's certainly plenty of public facilities and services in the neighborhood, so I think that that standard has been met. Number six, it does not cause undue traffic congestion. I think that a little congestion would actually be pretty good on that section of the street. Getting more people into the neighborhood and walking up and down the sidewalks and going into the other businesses would be a great thing, so I think that that standard has been met. Number seven, it preserves significant historical and architectural resources, which isn't applicable. And number eight, it preserves significant natural and environmental features, which isn't applicable. And number nine, it complies with all other applicable regulations of the district in which it is located and other applicable ordinances. So that standard has been met.
Well said. I agree.
May I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you.
I move in the matter 710 Main Street, number ZBA 18ZMJV-0055, with respect to, again, the property at 710 Main Street, that we recommend to city council that the special use permit be granted, subject to the following conditions: that hours of operation be limited from 6:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. seven days a week; that employees be prohibited from utilizing the metered parking on Main Street; and that the applicant read and be compliant with the city's litter plans; and finally, that the applicant otherwise develop and use the property in compliance with the evidence submitted.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. And with that, your project goes to city council with a recommendation. Good luck with your project. All right, moving on to 3318 Grant Street. You folks are here?
Yes.
Yes, okay. So Melissa, will you read that one into the record, please?
Phil and Marcia Vickman, property owners, apply for major zoning relief to enlarge an existing one-car garage to a two-car garage in the R1 Single Family Residential District. The applicants request to allow 32.1% building lot coverage where 30% is allowed, zoning code section 6827; a rear yard setback of 26.5 feet where a minimum of 30 feet is allowed, zoning code section 6828A; and an interior side yard setback of .82 feet where the minimum of 5 feet is allowed, zoning code section 6828A. The Zoning Board of Appeals is the determining body for this case. Documents included as part of the record include variation application submitted June 5, 2018, zoning analysis, plat of survey, site plans and elevations, 1999 variation summary, image of property, aerial view of property, zoning map of property, DAPR meeting minutes excerpt of June 27, 2018, and DAPR draft meeting minutes excerpt of July 11, 2018.
Thank you. Mr. Vickman, if you would please come up and tell us about... Oh, sorry. Whoever wants to come up and tell us about your project.
Thank you. Members of the Zoning Board of Appeals, my name is Bernard Citron. I'm with the law firm of Thompson-Coverde. I'm representing the Vickmans here today. Standing next to me is Ms. Marcia Vickman, who is one of the owners of the property. We have a couple of questions, or I'm trying to do this as expeditiously as possible.
No, I appreciate that, but if you can tell us a little bit about your project, bring us up to speed.
What we're seeking to do is this was an existing garage. As the testimony would indicate, the garage was there when the Vickmans bought the property. So had this been a brand-new garage, we wouldn't be in front of you today because we know we wouldn't meet any of the standards to try to put a garage there today. So for instance, the side yard setback existed when the Vickmans bought the property. They did seek a variation in 99, not to move the garage any closer to the side yard or into the rear yard, or to add any, well, to add a little bit of side coverage, but basically to connect it with the existing home. What they're seeking to do today is to slightly expand the garage, and you'll hear the testimony from the architect, but to slightly expand the garage, take it from a one-car garage to a two-car garage. And that's basically what we're seeking to do today. And the alternative would be to tear down the garage and rebuild it brand-new, all someplace into the rear yard, which also has some issues with this, but that's what the alternative would be, other than just the slight enlargement that we're seeking here today.
Can you address, or perhaps the owner can address, why you believe the attached garage is necessary?
We can't. If I can, I don't mean to make this very, very formal, especially for a garage, but it would probably be easier if I could just run through a couple of questions and which will address some of those issues, if I can do that. Marcia, again, could you please state your name and address?
My name is Marcia Vickman. I live at 3318 Grant Street.
And when did you buy the property?
We purchased the home in January 1993.
And at the time you purchased the home, the garage was effectively in the same location it is today?
Correct.
At the time when you were granted this variation to attach it, there must have been some reason why you wanted to seek an attached garage at that point in time?
We built a two-story addition, and the addition was within the, I think it was within a foot or two feet of the actual garage, and so our hardship was we either tear down the garage or we attach the garage, and we chose to attach the garage.
Are there other houses on this block with attached garages?
Between Crawford and Prospect, there are five houses on the north side of the street and five houses on the south side of the street. Of the 10 houses, five have attached garages.
In fact, the property immediately to, that's your west, has a fairly large attached garage?
Correct.
This is a photo of that garage. I'd like to, it wasn't part of the zoning packet, so if I can enter this...
Sure, we're going to mark that applicant's one.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Connect the garage immediately to your west.
Correct.
So about 50%...
On Grant Street going west from Crawford to Hastings, there are 11 houses. Seven of the 11 have attached garages.
So having attached garage is not out of character with the neighborhood? Yes?
Correct.
Okay. A question was asked by one of the commissioners as to why this is important for you, and as opposed to tearing down this garage and building a two-car garage in the rear yard, what makes this more than just a convenient type of situation?
One of the reasons is that Grant Street is a fairly busy street and it's a snow route. So we have the snow route in the winter, and in the summer months, we have the street cleaning, so we're constantly shuffling cars. Over the Fourth of July holiday, we were out of town. We left a car on the street. We got a ticket. That happens periodically because we can't keep track all the time.
So that forms part of the basis for having a two-car garage as opposed to leaving it as a one-car garage?
Correct.
Staff has pointed out that you could potentially build a detached garage in the rear yard. Are there some issues with doing that?
Yes. The preferable location for a detached garage on our lot would be on the southwest corner, but the southwest corner is where the garbage trucks go around the corner of the alley and they cut across our property, and they keep, like, cutting that corner even more and more onto our property.
Do you have a photo of that?
Yes, there's a photo right here.
And this is the photo that I'm about to...
Correct.
Two. We're doing numbers. It's okay.
So we wouldn't want to put a garage there because that wouldn't be a good idea.
In fact, you had to build your fence at that corner away from that corner so that the fence didn't get taken down from people cutting that corner.
Correct.
And that continues to happen today.
Correct.
On the other side of the other corner of the property, that is where the only, in effect, mature trees are on the property.
Correct.
I'll, well, I'm going to put this in by the architect. In order to, in order, again, if you had to tear it out, first of all, would it be a hardship for you to have to tear down the garage and put up a brand-new one someplace in the alley where all we're doing is a slight enlargement of the garage?
Yes.
Would it also require taking up part of a usable rear yard, which is smaller than normal based on the size of the property?
Yes.
Would it require you to pave part of your backyard so that you could have a pathway to get to that garage?
Yes.
And there would have to be changes to the existing home if that garage was taken down?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Have you spoken to any of your neighbors regarding the requested variations that we're seeking today?
Yes, we have. We sent, we delivered letters to 16 of our neighbors in the blocks surrounding our house. Of the 16, we got 10 back, all in favor, none opposed.
Do you have those letters for the record?
I do. I have nine of them. One of them is via text, so I don't have that. These are the letters. And we sent with them elevation photos, site plans, so they could see what we were doing.
We're going to take those? Yep. It's three, yeah, we're just going to label them as three.
We understand that those aren't determinative. Again, I recognize that the neighbors are not determinative of whether the standards are met and everything else. I think the point is that we don't have 11 people here, or any people here, I don't believe, who are objecting to the variations that are being asked for over the fact that this has been there. This garage has been there since sometime before 1993 because it was there prior to the Vickmans buying the property. Is there anything else, Ms. Vickman, that you'd like to add in terms of what we're seeking here today?
No.
I'd like to bring our architect up then, if I can do so, unless there's any questions of the secretary.
I have a quick question. So you made a point about the garage not being able to be put into a compliant location in the southwest corner because of garbage trucks. Just across the alley, there's a garage in that corner.
The garbage trucks go around our side. They loop and they go around our side.
If you build, they'll figure out how to get around you. It'll become an eight-point turn, but that's their problem, not yours.
We understand that, again, it would require tearing down an existing garage and rebuilding an entirely new one.
Okay.
If what we were seeking today was to put a brand-new garage in the location where we're seeking to enlarge it, then I would understand that as not being an appropriate response. But the garage is there today, and as the architect will explain, we're adding a couple of feet to the garage as opposed to tearing it down and building a brand-new garage. So that's some of the difference, and I will address that a little bit further.
Yep. Thank you.
I also had interactions with the city probably about a decade ago regarding that corner, asking them to change the garbage truck route so it wouldn't go across our property, and ultimately, they said that they would change the route, and they did not.
I have a couple of questions. Is the current one-car garage used for vehicular parking?
Yes.
And how many cars does a family own?
Three.
And so a two-car garage would be used to park two cars?
Correct.
And where is that parking done now?
Driveway and street.
So just to be clear, one of the reasons you said you needed the two-car garage was so that you could put all of your cars off the street for both snow...
Not all the cars.
Okay, so it doesn't eliminate the problem you have now? Because you're still going to have to park one car on the street, and it's still subject to street sweeping, and it's still subject to snow plowing.
That one is, correct.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry, you said you park a car currently, you park a car in your driveway?
Mm-hmm.
One car or two cars in your driveway?
So we currently have to shuffle the cars around to get one out, one of the others in the driveway.
Okay.
Kedzie.
Your name and then business address, please.
Hi, my name is Nancy Schlossberg. I'm from the architectural firm S Squared Architects, and our office, I work out of my house, is 3056 Hartzell.
Thank you.
In Evanston.
Nancy, can you briefly describe what, first of all, are we retaining as much as possible of the existing garage on the property?
We are. The existing garage is quite narrow, as you can see from the diagram. It literally is a slot of... It literally is a slot of space to the west of the existing house. And then there's a roofed, open porch, almost like a walkway, from the garage into the house, which is, can I walk up there?
Yeah, please, but you have to take the microphone, which is here.
Later as well.
And you need a pointer, which is somewhere in the podium.
So the existing garage, it shows that slot of space, and then the other block is a walkway, so it's a moot area.
Yeah, it's.
This is your tiny. Yeah, you do.
I'm sorry, I don't know how to use this.
You can.
Okay. So this part, this part of, is the existing garage, and then this rectangle here is actually a covered walkway from the garage into the existing house. And so the space that we're adding actually is just, it's about 80 square feet is all we're adding.
And what you're adding is basically just so that you can turn the cars, why don't you stand over there for a minute? It's just so you can turn the cars from coming in off of Grant, as opposed to now coming in off of the alley?
Correct. I mean, we made the garage 18, I'm sorry, 19 feet deep, which is absolutely minimum for the inside of a garage to be able to pull in off of the alley. And it's 20 feet from the existing house into the rear yard.
So how much are you, how much are you extending the garage south?
One foot nine from the existing garage.
So from the?
From this point to that point is one foot nine.
So from the standpoint of the variation they're requesting, that we're requesting the rear yard variation, is it fair to say that we're asking for the minimal additional rear yard variation that we can, just so that we can fit a second car in that direction?
Yes. I mean, this is a 16-foot door, and we're adding the absolute minimum to get two cars next to one another off of the alley.
Now, this lot is a pre-existing legal non-conforming lot in terms of lot size?
Yes.
We are seeking a variation for building coverage. If this lot was a legal, a standard lot under the R2 district, would be, would we need that variation?
No. Currently, I ran the numbers, and I think we'd be under the lot cover requirement.
Are we taking extraordinary measures to preserve the existing garage at this location?
We are. I mean, we, I discussed with the building department what they were going to require as far as foundations for this, and Marcia and Phil are willing to create foundations underneath the existing walls so that we can have proper puddings.
Now, the side yard?
Sorry, can we address that before you move on?
Absolutely.
Can you, can you be clearer about that?
Yes. Currently, the foundation is probably what's called a turned-down slab.
Right.
And so I talked to Dean Moska in the building department, and we are required to have a foundation to go four feet below grade, or 42 inches below grade, because it is attached to an existing structure.
Sure. So can I ask you a question about that from a, from a cost-effective standpoint? There's a point at which, when you're underpinning that foundation, it becomes cost-prohibitive. And frankly, it seems like it would be less expensive to just tear down the garage and start over. Because if you build a detached garage, you can just have that turned-down slab.
That's correct. But if the owners, I, if the owners are willing to do that work, that's.
Just the amount of work you're adding into that garage to save it is far more than that garage is worth, with the exception of the zoning variance.
Exactly.
Okay.
I.
Okay, thank you.
Nancy, at the time when this was presented to the DAPR committee, were issues raised around, regarding drainage on the property?
There was a concern that because of the location of the building to the alley, they were concerned that they didn't want additional water draining into the alley. And we modified the roof plan so that we could have a continuous gutter along the west edge with downspouts then that will come out to a French drain in the rear yard, as well as we removed the walkway and the driveway in the front, and did a similar installation in the front yard, so that any water that would be coming off this roof would be maintained on the existing, on the owner's property.
I forgot to ask this question. The side yard variation to go down to .82 feet, that's the current existing distance of that side yard?
Yes, that's correct.
So all we're doing is seeking to match that and extend the garage?
Yes, that's correct.
That short distance?
Right.
Nancy, would this garage, would these variations have any adverse impact to light and air on any of the surrounding neighbors?
No. I mean, we're against an alley. There isn't anybody affected back here, and the property to the west of them has garages there as well.
Oh, one of the things that you didn't point out in terms of the drainage, we are removing the driveway?
Yes, that's correct.
Or the walkway?
We're removing the driveway and a walkway.
So that will reduce drainage onto the city property?
Also reducing lock cover, reducing impervious surface.
So we meet the standards for impervious surface on this lot?
Yes, now we do, yes.
Would you even be able to see necessarily this addition from the street unless you were sort of right up against the alley there?
No, I, no, because it's only extending less than two feet into the rear yard. It's the same as what it is now.
Thank you.
And losing the garage door off of the front.
Thank you, I have nothing further.
I have a question. Just, did you, did you guys, feel free to come back over.
Okay.
You know, one of the things we look at is if alternatives have been considered. And the notes say that no alternatives were considered. Can you address that, please?
I had proposed different options to our client.
Yep.
Which they didn't want to pursue.
Okay, can you talk about what those options were?
None of them was with a detached garage. It was all how we couldn't either reduce the size of the garage, or moving the garage on the property, sliding it to the east.
To be in a conforming location?
No, it would not. It would still have required a minor variance. It would not have, we could never have gotten it to be in compliance.
So from a design standpoint, you never, you never looked at one option with a compliant garage?
Because it was going to take up all of the light and vent of the existing family room, which is behind that space.
But isn't, but isn't a detached garage smaller than the attached garage?
We, we were never approached and discussed doing a detached garage. That was never part of our mandate.
Okay, so you never, so you never considered putting it in a compliant location, ever?
It was never discussed.
Okay, thank you.
Can I make a comment?
Sure. It's your show.
So as far as the underpinning of the foundation in response to that cost prohibitive question, we were told that it would cost about $4,000 more. And for $4,000, we thought that would be worth it for our, you know, home.
What's the, just going back to something you testified earlier, you said that knocking this one down and putting it in a compliant location would cause you a hardship. I understood that in the moment to mean a financial hardship. Is it, was I misunderstanding, or is there some other hardship it would cause you?
It would change the quality of life, living in that home, as well as to get?
In what way?
Well, we'd have to walk outside through the elements to get to the garage. Plus, the where that garage would be placed, we'd have to walk out the door of the west of the house, walk all the way around the alley to get to the house, to the garage on the opposite end of the property. And the only way to get there in the yard would be to take a walkway and make it diagonally all the way across the yard. Because you're talking about the garage coming out to the west, and the, I mean, the door coming out to the west and the garage on the southwest, southeast part of the property, sorry.
And that would be similar to what else is, other garages and other connections between house and garage in the neighborhood, correct?
I don't think so, because I think they all put their garages on the same side of the house as their door.
If we look at the satellite picture, we can see the neighbor next door, and it's a similar situation, right, where they've got to go sort of kitty-corner. But, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, come on up. No, I think he's.
So my name's, hello, my name is Phil Vikman. I'm also the owner of the property.
Yeah.
So we don't have a rear door on our house. And so to get to a garage, so that is a difference between the other houses that you see in the neighborhood, behind us, or to the side of us. We would have to, we would have to create a rear door to go to our garage. Right now, we would have to go out the side and walk along the alley to get to a detached garage, whether it were placed in the southwest corner, or even further, if it were placed in the southeast corner.
Is your, is your existing door where it's located in the plan?
Well, it's a sliding glass door. It doesn't lock from the outside. It's not designed for that, for that use. It's a recreational sliding glass door.
Okay. Okay.
Thank you.
I think Code would like you to have a swinging door. Okay, thank you.
I have a question to the architect. Can we have a back? So you mentioned that you kind of explored some options, the, almost the same location, but in different configuration. Did you try to make an interesting solution, like extending the garage to the north, where's the existing door, so that you have one car coming from the driveway as it is, and then a second car coming from the alley into a garage with a single door, so that you can save on floor area of the garage?
No, I'm sorry, we never did. The west side of this house actually has some large windows.
Windows, yeah.
And that is actually the only natural light into the dining room space on that west side. So we didn't approach it from extending it north. It's, it's a narrow space. You would never be able to drive into the, into the garage from the alley and have enough depth. You would always have to either park on an angle, or park per, perpendicular to Grant Street. There's just not enough, it's only like 11 feet.
Yeah, well, that's my point. You can park one car perpendicular as they park it now, and then have another one that enters from the alley.
Basically, a stacking type of arrangement?
No, I'm not speaking about a tandem solution. I'm speaking.
Oh, I'm sorry. I see what you're, I see what you're saying.
I think what she said is that you'd block the windows to the west.
Yes, I know about that, but I was asking whether this was an idea that you explored.
No, we didn't, we didn't explore that.
The second question that I have is in this configuration with a double door from an alley that is 16 feet wide only, how will you guarantee the safety of exiting the garage? Because you know that Evanston zoning ordinance requires three feet usually setback for detached garages.
Correct.
Because alleys are usually 16 feet, but we need about 18 to take the turn.
Okay.
In this case, with a 16-feet alley and the garage door adjacent to the alley, you're risking things when the car backs out, or gets out, of somebody passing on the alley and hitting the car. So you'll have to have some precautions.
We could add those mirrors, what?
There are mirrors.
Yeah, that's one of the answers that I expected. Yeah, all right, thank you.
Was there anything else you wanted to present?
We have no further testimony now.
Does anybody else here have any other questions for them?
I have one question. In the testimony to DAPR, it was suggested that the clients might possibly consider rebuilding the garage in its entirety, but in this configuration. Is that an option that you are still considering?
We took that off the table because of the fact that at that point, it would be viable, at that point, it would be easy for the board to say, move it where it would be compliant, if we were building it from, from ground up.
Right. And, and one last question that I have. I would like to know a little bit more about the, the extent of damage or compromise to the main dwelling unit if you remove this garage.
If we remove the garage, actually, there wouldn't be a significant amount of damage. It's the house, the, what you're, I have to go back over here, I'm sorry. This portion, this portion of the residence is a mudroom that then enters into family room space here. If we remove this, you would be left with just this portion of, of the house, which would need to get recided to match the rest of it. Theoretically, that could all come down.
Okay.
Really briefly?
Sure.
Because I understand this is just a garage, but a garage is a very important portion of how people live in their houses. As I indicated before, and I'm very serious about this, if this was being started from fresh, we wouldn't be here before today, because I don't think I could make at all a case to say, let's attach this garage. The fact of the matter is, is we're all looking at it, and I can see where we're looking at this as in two different matters. We didn't create this condition. The garage existed there when we bought the house. It was .82 feet off of, off of the property line, though the access was from Grant Street. So when the house was originally enlarged in 99, it was then that it was connected at that point in time. So in terms of whether or not that hardship was self-created, the house, the garage existed there. We didn't create that, that issue. We did, by attaching it, create some other issues because of the variations that were needed to be there. We do that. Second of all, with all due respect, I think it's unfair to say, well, you should tear down this existing viable structure and put it someplace else on the property. Again, if we were here without a garage, then you should say that to us and enforce that. But the garage is there today, and it's not necessarily a viable alternative, nor does the ordinance require you to tear down an existing structure just to be able to build a two-car garage someplace else on the property, especially in light of the very small variations that are being asked for. And that's, again, maybe a difference of opinion, and I am going to advocate for what I believe is, is correct on this, is we're only seeking to enlarge the garage south by one foot nine inches. It is the minimum that we can enlarge that garage and fit the second car into it, which, by the way, the property is pre-existing, non-conforming today. All your houses require two-car garages, right? Two-car, two parking spaces. So we are actually solving a non-conformity with as minimal of variations as we possibly can. The variation in terms of building coverage is, as, as the staff report indicates, is caused by the virtue that we do not have the same-size lot. We don't have the standard R2 lot. We are below. That was, again, that's an existing condition. And we are trying to respect that by keeping the garage as small as possible. Now, again, granted, and it was pointed out in staff report, we do have what was, what is now a parking space, we're not taking down that 10-by-12 space in front. That's true. You can make a point on that one. Part of that was, is because we are trying to save as much of the existing garage as possible. Part of it is, it doesn't really affect everybody. But when you go through the standards and you really look at it, we haven't created the hardship, other than the fact that we're trying to add a second car here and fit it into this garage, so that at least most of the time, we can have two cars on the property as your own ordinance requires us to do so. So we're ameliorating that vari, that, that non-conformity, number one there. Number two, we are, in fact, enlarging the garage by one foot nine inches south. That's about as minimal as we possibly can. Again, existing garage. If it was a brand-new garage, different story, but we are doing that. In terms of impact to the neighbors, we have no adverse impact in terms of light and air or development to the neighbors. In fact, the only neighbor who would, in fact, generally see this garage already has a two-car attached garage next to us. That's what's there. This block may be, and maybe this is an anomaly in Evanston, but about 50% of the houses already have attached garages. So from this neighborhood, that is, in effect, the pattern of development has been attached garages, which is what we're having here today. We're not adding something that isn't already in the neighborhood. In terms of other potential impacts that the? In terms of other potential impacts that there could be on neighbors, it was brought up under DAPR, which was a drainage issue. We've solved that. We've, we've actually taken extraordinary, not extraordinary, but we've taken additional steps that otherwise would not be done to keep that drainage on our property. In fact, we're creating a better situation than exists today, because today, the drainage goes onto the alley, period. Just goes onto the alley, washes off of our, and there's an issue with that, and that's been brought up to us. Well, we're now fixing a situation that currently exists today. So we're clearly not doing this to make more money, as been pointed out, and again, you can approach this in two different ways, is we're spending more money to keep an existing garage. We're not necessarily ever going to get that additional value back by doing the underpinning that was pointed out. That's not, you know, if we went to sell the house tomorrow, we're not going to be able to charge more to someone or to sell it for more by keeping that. But to keep something that's already existing, that's part of the family's lifestyle, that doesn't affect the rear yard, which is part of the other thing that we're asking, is since that garage is already there, why would you want to eliminate even more use of that rear yard, which is already smaller than many of the rear yards in the area due to the lot size and due to the way this house looks out? Why, why burden that backyard with a brand-new structure that would actually take away use from that rear yard? With all due respect, I understand that garbage trucks are not supposed to run over your property, but it's been doing it for 15 years or more. It's actually 20-something years they've been doing it. We put stuff there, and they still do it. So with all due respect, we don't trust that they will figure it out, because we actually put stuff there, as you saw from the picture, so that they wouldn't cross the property, and they still do it. I grew up in the city of Chicago. That's what happens, you know, garbage, you know, you don't have those setbacks, and garbage trucks just run over your property and therein think. So that, that trust factor is in there, and to put it on the other side of the property, which is, I think, what Mr. Vicman was talking about, having to cut across the property, we'd have to take down the few trees that are in the, in the property in order to take that. So again, that seems to go counter to what this, the ordinance wants you to do here. So it all depends on which way you want to look at this. And I agree, you're charged, and I'm not telling you your job, but you're charged to look at it based on the way you see the zoning ordinance, but the way I see your zoning ordinance is we have actually met the standards here, because we are asking for the minimum variations that are necessary. We're ameliorated any negative impact to surrounding properties, and the code doesn't say you have to take down existing structures and move them someplace on the property. That's not a standard in, in the code to do that. When the answer was, did we look at something that would be compliant? Well, that is the only thing that would be compliant. That would be the only way to do this structure that would be compliant, would be to push it into the back part of the property and make it detached. And I don't personally believe that the code says that. With that, we're asking for your support in this project. Thank you.
Is there anybody here to, would like to comment on 3318 grant? Anybody? Anybody? Going once, going twice? Okay. All right. With that, we will close the record. Thoughts?
I, I'm sure that we're all familiar with Grand Street. It's very narrow, and it is very heavily trafficked, because it's a main thoroughfare through northwest Evanston. I think that there's public benefit in getting additional automobiles off the street. I think this is a very small addition, and I, I really don't like the idea of tearing down a structure that exists and all the waste that that entails in order to follow the strict letter of the zoning requirements. I think that's why ultimately DAPR voted eight and three in favor of allowing them to go forward with this. So I think that there is public benefit and good sense in allowing this variance to go through.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Well, I, I want to say something about this. I live very close to this property, and I know all these buildings, and I live in a similar building. It is a part of the city that has similar buildings and, and similar-sized lots. So I have to balance certain thoughts that I have. This garage was connected to the building after a large expansion of the building, and this is actually the mixture of creating the hardship. And no matter of that, I kind of respect the wish of the owners to make it better and to take one more car out of the street. All the streets in the neighborhood suffer from parking on the street, and especially the snow removal and the cleaning on the street, and my neighbors usually have tickets. And I know this for sure, because, for instance, one of my neighbors, she parks her car in my yard when she leaves town for vacation, just not to get tickets. So this, this is important thing. I, I will be in favor of this project, just because I would like to have one car out and in a garage. But I continue to have my concerns, and that's why I am speaking loudly to the owners and to the architect in two regards. The first one is the cost of this expansion. I'm not sure that you will save money if you build it anew, just because I'm pretty much sure that you'll have to almost tear it down, if not completely tear it down, to make the new foundation and the new roof, because I don't think that you can use the ridge and the roof as it is. And second, you have really to take care of the safety of the alley. This is, it's not only the garbage truck, it's all your neighbors that use this alley. It is a risky thing. So you have to be careful. I am a little bit dissatisfied by the fact that there were no alternatives to this garage location. We should have some alternatives, but the way it is presented now, I am once again with just a little bit above my concerns to support it.
Thank you.
I, I appreciate that the property owner is trying to improve the property and make the property more livable. Carol, if I understand what you said, and I just have a question, it sounds like you don't believe that, that this rises to the level of a hardship, or, no, let me correct that, that you believe that some of this issue is self-created, some of the hardship is self-created by the expansion that was done in, I believe, 1999.
Yeah, the expansion of the building, it created actually all this lot coverage, and the things that we're now talking about, impervious surfaces, lot coverage, and all these things, they were made actually because of the large expansion of the residential part of the.
I certainly advocate for property owners making improvements at their property that allow them to stay in their home and, and continue to invest, but I think there are standards here that I don't believe had been met, and that would lead me to have a hard time in supporting this project, specifically the practical, you know, the hardship or the practical difficulty, based on the, the evidence that I heard, the difficulty is being exposed to the elements and having to walk from, you know, from the house to the garage. I don't think that's a particular hardship that one wouldn't expect by living in Chicago. I don't believe that we heard a financial hardship. In fact, it's going to cost more, if I understood correctly, in, in doing the project as proposed here. So there is the issue of the hardship, and I do think that some of this is self-created by the project that they undertook in 1999. Certainly, you can't anticipate, you know, how many years ago that was, all of the additions and needs as they change, and I can understand that as a property owner. At the same time, as, as my job is to look at these projects according to the standards, I don't believe that all the standards have been met.
Thank you.
I am on the fence. I agree. The hardest time I'm having supporting this is that the hardship here was self-created. You want to add a 1.9-foot addition to a garage, but the lot coverage issue was, was created because you expanded your home in 1999. And if you hadn't done that, or if in 1999, you had considered the size of your garage at that time, or the location of your garage at that time, perhaps you could have done an expansion at that time that kept the lot coverage compliant and gained a second car garage. So I do think the hardship here is one that's self-created, at least with respect to the lot coverage issue. I don't think it necessarily was with respect to the side yard setback issue. That said, this is a substandard lot, and it is a modest extension of, of an existing structure, and I do believe there is a value to a homeowner in having, aside from walking across, aside from walking across the yard as the hardship, I think there's a value to the owner in being able to access their garage from their home. So if there's a package of paper towels that they want to store in their mudroom, which would have to go away, that's something they have here that they would lose by having to move the garage. And in some ways, the substandard lot to me, and the fact that this project would be, which is a modest extension, would be fine on a standard-sized lot also sort of pushes me the other way. So I, I am a little bit on the fence. I don't necessarily believe the standards are all met, and I am anxious to hear the rest of the comments, if any.
While I understand that this is not the minimum variation that you could request in this project, and I understand that most of this board feels like you created your own hardship, here we are today, and you would like to take another car off the street. I defer to Carol as both a resident of the community and an architect, and I agree with this project.
I would also just like to add, if I may, that, that it, it may not be the least variance. The least variance would be tear it down and put the garage up, but there is that public benefit, and it is a significant public benefit. So in my estimation...
What's the, the public benefit being?
Public benefit is the removal of one car from Grand Street.
But that benefit exists if the car is built as a detached garage or an attached garage. You're creating that benefit by putting a second car garage on the property.
Well, there's not to say that they will build a garage if it's detached. If you've been walking through your house to your garage since 1999, that's almost 20 years, to go out the side door and walk all the way around your house to a corner of the alley, that is, that's a significant hardship, I think. And there's not a single neighbor who objects to this. It's not going to alter the view of the house from the street. It is a very modest addition to the garage. And, and can we know in 1999, when you put the addition on to the house, that, that, you know, it's going to become untenable to be, you know, messing your cars around constantly, you know, so, so many years later? I just think that there's a, a real benefit, and, and I know that we have standards, but I think that this is so minimal that these property owners ought to be given the relief that they're seeking.
Is, is public benefit one of the standards for this variation?
It's only a standard to the extent that we find that the project is intended as a money-making venture, in which case, public benefit can offset that finding.
So they stated that obviously this is not a, a money-making venture. That's not why they're, you know, proposing this project. So I'm not even clear if public benefit, as, as some are describing it, and removing a car from the street is, is something to be considered as one of these standards in considering the standards.
I think that whenever we grant a variance, we consider whether or not there is a public benefit to offset, to offset the, you know, not complying with the strict letter of the rules as they are set out in the zoning ordinance.
So none of you will be surprised where I come down on this. So I do believe that unfortunately, they have created their own hardship here. And the, and the fact is, it went from a detached garage, which had a three-foot side yard setback. When it became an attached garage, it went to a five-yard side yard, five-foot side yard setback. And so you've increased that degree of non-conformity here. The other thing I have real problems with is the functionality of this garage. Garages are, are, are set off the alley three feet, so that you can make the turning radius into the garage. It's a 16-foot alley. You need that extra three feet in order to turn into the garage. Without that extra three feet, you're never getting into that garage. You will be making a 12-point turn to get in and out of that garage, and if that's not more frustrating, I don't know what is. And if it's difficult to get into that garage, we're not getting any cars off the street. It becomes a great place to store stuff, which is a delightful, which is a delightful benefit anyhow. So I really, I fall on the side of, of this not meeting the standards for this particular situation. So we're going to go through the standards. Pipe up when you disagree with me. And then, once we get to the end, I think I know where, where I stand in this, in the voting. What I would like to say is if there is a motion to approve, I would like there to be a condition that if, in any circumstance, the foundations cannot be underpinned, and they come back to the city, to the building department, and say, hey, we just want to remove them and pour new ones in their entirety, that, that, that this, that the variance is no longer valid.
So you're saying that you would like a condition that if they have to take the garage down to pour the footings?
Yes.
That the variation is avoided?
Yes. If they cannot underpin it as their intention is, and they end up pouring new foundations, need to pour new foundations in its entirety, then it's new construction, and it's completely, then you got to put it where it belongs.
Okay.
Okay. So the standards for major variations, there are seven of them. And the first is, the requested variation will not have a substantial adverse impact on the use, enjoyment, or property values of adjoining properties. There's been testimony that the size of this is minimal, and it is, and it is a, a minor enlargement of the existing garage. And so I do believe that it will not have any adverse impact on, on any of the neighbors. So I do believe that that standard has been met. Number two, the requested variation is in keeping with the intent of the zoning ordinance. It's certainly one of the intents to allow people to make modifications to their homes, to, to make changes as the, as lifestyles change and those sorts of things. So, and that is merely what the applicant is requesting. So I do believe that that standard has been met. Number three, the alleged hardship or practical difficulty is peculiar to the property. I struggle with this one a little bit, because there is, there's nothing in this particular case that keeps this, this garage from being put in a compliant location. There are opportunities for it to be in a compliant location, and there are opportunities which will actually make the garage certainly more functional. So I don't believe that that standard has been met.
Sorry, I'm going to disagree with you on this one. I do think that the hardship is, is peculiar to the property in as much as the property is substandard, and the hardship of having a two-car garage, which is in, consistent with the intent of the zoning ordinance, to have a second parking space on the property is a direct function of the substandard property size. That said, I also think when you get to standard six, that this hardship was created by the owner, so, but I do think the hardship exists.
All right. Thank you. Number four, the property owner would suffer a particular hardship or practical difficulty as distinguished from a mere inconvenience if the strict letter of the regulations were to be carried out. According to testimony, what I heard was that it's, it's really more of a, an inconvenience. The, the issue here at hand is whether the garage is attached versus detached. And like 90% of homes in Evanston, garages are detached, and there is a walkway from the garage to the house. So I do not find that that standard has been met.
I am going to take exception to that, because I think that having to tear down a structure that existed on your property in 1993 when you purchased it is more than an inconvenience. I think that that rises to the level of a hardship.
Thank you. Number five, the purpose of the variation is not based exclusively upon a desire to extract additional income from the property. These are longtime residents who have lived here for quite some time, and their, their goal is not to flip the property or to sell it immediately. So I do believe that that standard has been met. So I do believe that that standard has been met. Number six, the alleged difficulty or hardship has not been created by any person having an interest in the property. I do believe that they created their own hardship in this particular case with that major addition back in 1999, which took the garage from being a detached, with a three-foot side yard setback requirement, to an attached garage, which now has a five-foot side yard setback requirement. So it certainly is impacting the, what is available here from both a setback issue as well as from a lot coverage issue. So I do, I do not believe that that standard has been met.
I will have to say that I don't believe that that standard has been met, but I believe that there is public benefit in removing cars parked on Grant Street from the street that would offset that and allow us to grant a variance over that one exception.
Thank you. Number seven, the requested variation requires the least deviation from the applicable regulation among the feasible options identified before the zoning board of appeals issues its decision or recommends to, or its recommendation to city council regarding said variation. It's been noted by staff that there is a compliant location on the lot for this garage. I'm aware of a compliant location on this lot for the garage, so I do not believe that this is the minimum change necessary, since there is a compliant location. So I do not believe that that standard has been met.
Once again, I'm going to take exception and say I think that this is the least variation that the owners can, the least deviation that the owners can make in simply expanding to a two-car garage without having to tear the structure down completely and build a new and have to add a back door or add more impervious surface to their yard. So I think that this is the least deviation that they, in order for them to achieve a two-car garage on their property.
Thank you. With that, do I have a motion?
So I'm moving in the case of CBA 18ZMJV-0054, that we grant the variation for the addition to the garage at 3318 Grant Street.
What was that condition?
With the condition that if the owners elect to tear the garage down to pour new footings instead of underpinning the footings, that this variation will be voided.
Second.
It's a moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Nay?
Nay.
So, with a vote of three to three, we wait for the next meeting, which will be August 28th. You guys do not have to come back. The member who is not here will listen to all the testimony. They will watch the videos, and then they will vote on the case at that time. So thank you for your time. I appreciate it. I'm sorry we don't have a resolution for you tonight.
Thank you for giving your time and consideration.
Sure. Thank you. Moving on to 2118, 2120 Ashland, 1625 Payne, 2125, 21 Dewey. Is there another address? No. Melissa, would you read that into the record, please?
Kathy Lichtenstein. Kathy Lichtenstein-Lessie applies for special use permits for a daycare center domestic animal in a kennel, Rex's Place, in the MXC Mixed Use Employment District, zoning code section 61343. The applicant proposes a special use permit to expand the current daycare center domestic animal at 2120 Ashland Avenue, to include 2118 to 2120 Ashland Avenue, and to include 2147 Dewey Avenue as the manager's residence with outdoor animal space, and 2149 Dewey Avenue as the business owner's residence with outdoor animal space. The applicant also proposes a special use permit to expand the existing kennel at 1625 Payne Street that was previously approved as an accessory use to the daycare center domestic animal at 2120 Ashland Avenue, and to include a kennel at 2118 Ashland Avenue with outdoor animal space at 2147 to 2149 Dewey Avenue. The zoning board of appeals makes a recommendation to city council, the determining body for this case. Documents included as part of the record include special use applications submitted May 24th, 2018, operations summary, 2010 approval, 2011 approval, plots of survey, site plans, letter of support, image of property, aerial view of property, zoning map of property, and dapper draft meeting minutes of July 11th, 2018.
Now, before we hear from the applicant, what did that mean in English? I generally consider myself to be smart, but what are we talking about here?
The best way to explain this is a chart that is in the memo. So, current operations for each address, and then proposed operations for each address. So ultimately, 2120 Ashland, there is no change, but that is the primary location of the business. 2118 Ashland Avenue will be expanded for a kennel. 1625 Payne Street is currently a kennel that is limited to accessory use only and limited in number of animals and how often. And that would be expanded to a principal use where it would not have that, those limitations. 2147 Dewey Avenue is a house that currently has the outdoor area for the doggy daycare that will remain as-is, other than the manager will live there, and it will be the outdoor space for the full kennel. And then 2149 Dewey Avenue currently is not associated with the business, but is proposed to be the residence for the owner and have additional outdoor space for both the doggy daycare and the kennel.
And even when it's just outdoor space, it needs a special use?
Because it is, because the use itself requires the special use, this covers all of it.
Okay.
So that there can't be any confusion among anyone.
Okay.
Nice chart.
Is it a special use because of the number of dogs?
No.
Because they're dogs.
Just because it's dogs?
The doggy daycare and the kennel are both special use requirements. The applicant actually opened her business before the city had any regulations for special uses for these. So this will also bring everything into current compliance rather than any legal, nonconforming anything.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
Hi.
Hi. Please tell us about, give us your name and your business address.
Kathy Lichtenstein, 2120 Ashland in Evanston. And as Melissa said, we opened the business in 2010, and at the time we did, there was not a special use thing. So we've had a daycare since March 1st, 2010, that's operated there. We currently do cage-free boarding in the 1625 Payne Street building. It's a little building, and it has couches and chairs, and we keep about 15 dogs there cage-free during special times of the year, so Thanksgiving, or Christmas, or spring break, or something like that. And so my project is proposing at 2118, we actually do an actual kennel for non-daycare dogs. There is no freestanding kennel in the city of Illinois, and I turn away about 10 or 12 people a week asking me to board their dogs, and I can't do it. And so I send them to Carrot Hills in Glenview, or Kennelworth Kennels in Kennelworth, or Loving Care in Northfield. And about nine years ago, the city had asked me to work with them to establish some regulations for building a kennel, and I did. And I thought for sure someone was going to open one here, but nobody ever did. And so this space became available, and it will be perfect to have a very small kennel. We're not looking to have a big one. It would have about 40 kennels. They would be private spaces for the dogs. I actually don't know. I brought you pictures of what the kennels would look like. They'd be back-to-back because it diminishes the noise. We'd have rubber on the floor that too diminishes the noise. There would be tempered glass in the kennels that too diminishes the noise. There'd be soundproofing on the walls that too will diminish the noise, and we would just operate a kennel.
So there'd be no noise after all that diminishment?
Well, I'm not going to say there wouldn't be no noise, but there'd be, hopefully not a lot. That is probably the one thing. I've gone to conferences where people say they don't have any noise from the dogs. I don't know how they do it. We try our best.
Do the current establishments have those similar noise protections? I know you said they're not caged in the current 1625 Payne...
We never have a problem there. There's no residences around, and truthfully, when we're taking the dogs there after a day of daycare, they sleep. That's what they do. So we have people sleeping there overnight with them. Very rarely do I hear that a dog even so much as barks.
What's the closest residence to your business?
It's going to be my house.
Okay. So other than your house...
It's going to be my manager's house.
And then, other than that, are there any people that live close to your...
There are some houses on the Dewey block, but that's not going to be where the kennel is. That's where the outdoor space is, and we're only there during the day for maybe an hour or two. So there are no houses where the kennel would be.
So you only go outside for like an hour?
Correct. When the weather's nice. We can't go out if it's more than 80 degrees because of heat stroke. We can't go out in weather. So we only go out if the weather's nice, and then it's maybe an hour or two, maybe three, but that's about it.
And the staff is out there...
Correct.
...with the dogs?
Correct.
Okay.
So Kathy, hi.
Hi.
So, as you know, in full disclosure, on the peacock lofts directly across the alley from the yard, we hear the dogs barking...
Okay.
...all day long. So I have a business in unit number seven, which is in the back. It's right across the alley.
Yeah.
And when the dogs are out, they hear them a lot.
Okay.
And they have remarked on that to me. So my concern, so that's one issue. The other issue, just in terms of volume, if you walk around our neighborhood at this point, you will see burned-out grass spots just about everywhere. We replace the sod on the front yard at 1611 Simpson every year.
Okay.
And we have to replace it every year.
Okay.
Now, that being said, you know, Kindred Spirits is right next door to that property, and so that's another dog-related business. So there is a huge abundance of dogs in the neighborhood. My concern is twofold. First, the barking is an issue, and I know it's an issue, when the dogs are outside in those yards. So if you expand from your current one big backyard to two big backyards that have a number of dogs in them, and that's a big space behind the property that's the one further to the south, I am concerned about the level of barking. I'm also concerned because those houses abut... Who lives in the house on the end? The third house on next door to your two houses?
I have no idea.
It used to be Mrs. Davis. I'm not sure if she's still there.
Yeah, I have no idea.
But has this project been presented to her as a next-door neighbor to houses that will have...
No. What happened is, my landlord came to me and said they're going to sell the houses. And the yard that I'm using is attached to the house. And so if I didn't buy the houses, then I would lose my yard. So I bought the two houses. That's what happened.
And you actually yourself are going to live in that house as your principal residence?
Correct.
Okay. So I'm further concerned because, once again, Twiggs Park is the main part... Those houses are right on Twiggs Park.
Right.
I'm concerned about Mrs. Davis, if she still is in that property.
But there's no, there's no dogs there. I'm going to live in that house.
Well, I understand you're going to live in that house, but the dog walkers, if you have a kennel that accommodates 40 dogs, and how many do you have in your daycare currently?
It depends on the day. In the summer, about 50. In the winter, it could be up to 90.
Right, right. And those dogs have to be walked?
We don't walk them. We walk them to the yard.
Just to the yard?
Yeah. Through the alley.
You don't walk them through the neighborhood?
No, we don't. Never.
Okay. So I have seen a lot of dogs walking through the neighborhood.
On rare occasion, we might walk them. We used to. When we first opened, we did. We tried to walk them a couple of times a day. We found that it didn't work, and so we walked them to the yard, and that's where we do it. We really don't have the staff to walk them a bunch of times a day. So no, we walk them to the yard. That's where we try to do the outdoor play.
Well, I guess that my concern would be that, and again, I'm bringing this to you...
You know what? I appreciate it.
You've been a great business in the neighborhood, but this expansion is a big expansion, and it's a big step that's adding a lot more dogs. And there are a lot of small residences in the neighborhood. So right next door to the buildings on Ashland, there are those, the two little residences between that one and the Schultz Construction Company. And then across the street, there are several little residences. So I'm voicing concern because as the barking from the dogs has created an issue for my tenants, because they're there during the day, they're business tenants, and there are residential tenants in the back there, too. I just want to know what you can do to address those concerns about noise. And I'd also really like to know that the third house is, knows what's about to happen, if it still is Mrs. Davis, because it's, although you're saying it's going to be principal residence...
Right.
If the two backyards are combined to create outdoor space for as many as 90 dogs...
No.
...that will alter the character of the neighborhood for...
That other yard is currently rented by Cashian Brothers. They park their trucks there, and they have a lease until April 2019. So we don't know what we're going to do with that yard. We know we have to keep the lease going until April of 2019.
Ms. Lichtenstein, can I just, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
For special use requests, we have the ability to condition the granting of a special use or the recommendation of a granting of a special use. And in this case, one thing that occurs to me is that a condition we could recommend would be that you, in addition to implementing the kennel soundproofing that you mentioned, or diminishment techniques that you mentioned, also that you'd be required to work with your neighbors to minimize the extent of the sound to them, the sound effect to them outdoors to the extent possible. Is that a condition?
I will be absolutely happy to do that. I have promised one of my neighbors at the Auto Dock, which is right down the street, that I would put soundproofing in the back of the daycare, and we do intend to do that. Part of doing the kennel is that we will expand our income and be able to do some of those things. So we can certainly look at putting a different type of fence in there. I wish that we, I wish that I had known that. I don't know that there's anything we can do about it. We aren't at the yard that open that often. This year particularly, we haven't been because it's too hot and the dogs get heat stroke. But I will remember that one. Maybe we'll put smaller groups.
So to be clear about what I was asking, if there were that type of condition on the special use, and you didn't comply with the condition, obviously, you could lose the special use if the investigation revealed you didn't comply with it?
I understand.
Okay.
Can I ask a couple of questions?
Yeah.
Just because I'm trying to understand what you're, we're going from and what we're going to. And so right now, you have 50 dogs in daycare, between 50 and 90.
Right.
And all of those dogs go from the Ashland Avenue address down the alley over to the Dewey address to play in the backyard?
Only if it's a nice day, and we can do that.
Okay. Do they all go at once?
No.
Take 50 to 90 dogs?
No.
How many do you take?
Maybe 20, 25.
Okay. So right now, you're taking 20 at a time. They go hang out, have a good time, come back, then you take another set over there.
That's about it.
Okay. So if what we have right now in that daycare is 50 dogs, you're doing two sets of that?
Right.
And so that's been happening for the better part of eight years?
Yes.
Okay. So everybody in the neighborhood has got to be aware that you have dogs?
Yes.
And that there are 20 dogs that go and play in the backyard?
Yes. Yes.
Okay. With the change of, with the addition of the property on Payne, right, we're talking about adding 40 more dogs?
No. That has nothing to do with the property on Payne.
Okay. Isn't that the kennel?
The property on Payne, it is a small building that we rent. That is a, what we use it for is cage-free boarding.
Right.
At certain times of the year. It's not a kennel. We don't have...
Right, now it isn't. Now it isn't. Right now, it's 15 dogs.
We're not making that a kennel.
Okay. Tell me where the kennel is.
We're leaving it exactly where it is. The kennel is going to be on 2118, and maybe I can give you...
Give me the street.
Yeah.
I kind of drew this after the DAPR meeting. This kind of tells you where we're at. Is this included in the...
It is. Yep. This is already included, so I'm not going to include it as an applicant's exhibit.
So that's kind of exactly, this is where we are right now, in the daycare.
Let's, let's...
Yeah.
Let's talk about what we're talking about.
Yep. So we're going to put it up on the screen. We're going to ask you to stay at the microphone.
Sure.
Right? And then walk us, walk me through this quickly. Yes. We're in that one. It is only half of it. There you go. Perfect. All right.
So 2118...
Yep.
Is where we're doing the proposed kennel.
Okay. What's in there now?
It's empty. There's nothing. We just put in air conditioning. We're putting in a rubber floor, but it's totally empty.
Okay. And what's the space next to it with all the Xs?
It is a neighbor's place that...
Somebody else owns that property?
Robinson Rentals owns that property.
Okay.
Is that the t-shirt shop?
Yes.
And what, I'm sorry?
Go ahead.
What is the impact of the new kennel space on the outdoor play area? So what's the hours that, you know, so dogs are there?
We don't, we don't go outdoors until after 9 o'clock because we know there's a noise ordinance.
Okay.
We're usually gone by 1 o'clock?
1.
Yeah. We usually are out there by 1.
So then how many, in line with Mary Beth's thinking, sort of the impact, how many dogs would you be able to accommodate at 2118 Ashland for a kennel?
40.
40. So at capacity, then, you would have an additional 40 dogs potentially in those outdoor play yards? Is that it?
No. Because not all of those dogs could go to the play yard. So some of them are being kennelled because they can't go to a daycare, or they can't be socialized with other dogs.
I see. Okay.
And so, no, they would not go there.
Is the maximum number of the dogs in the play yard going to change? I mean, assuming you have 40 dogs in the kennel and they all could go to the play yard, wouldn't you still sort of do 20 at a time?
Yes.
Just stagger the hours?
We started doing that because we have some dogs who, we have a white samoyed, a couple of them, who are totally white, and if they go to the yard, they turn black. So we have ended up taking groups of dogs. We have some dogs that get sunburned, and so we can't take them out there. Or some dogs that just don't like it outside. So that's why we tended to take smaller groups. Some days, we just take the big, large dogs. But as I said, we never go out there until 9 o'clock. And then we're usually gone by 1. By about 3 o'clock in the afternoon, we actually have the front of 2120. We have aromatherapy going and soft music going, and it's filled with dog beds. And the dogs are sleeping on the beds, waiting for their owners to pick them up. So it's usually fairly quiet. You don't hear anything. During the day, I admit that they can be noisy. But it's usually when a new dog walks in that they're excited, that they're seeing somebody. And so they kind of sing a song. But there are days when you can walk in and you don't hear anything. So it really depends on the group of dogs you have and how they react.
Ms. Lichtenstein, I don't know if you know that Ms. Davis, they have been out of town for a while.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, her husband's been sick.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And so they've been in Florida, so they probably don't even know about this expansion.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just wanted to mention that.
Thank you. I haven't gone around to meet the, this happens so quickly in terms of buying the houses. So I haven't really gone around and introduced myself in terms of that I'm buying the house. Part of that was because there are renters in those houses, and I wanted to respect them. And they're not very happy about moving. And so I just kind of waited. But I will remember that when I go over and meet them.
Yeah, maybe just slip something under her door.
Perfect. Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah.
Would it be therefore, since you don't walk the dogs through the neighborhood, it would be acceptable then to condition the special use on a provision that would prohibit the dogs being walked through Twiggs Park?
That would be absolutely fine.
Okay. Because I just, I just don't want to see Twiggs Park browned out. And yeah.
I don't want to run into your 20 dogs when you're walking them. I'm afraid of dogs.
I'm allergic to them.
All right. Are there any other questions from the board? Okay. Why don't you have a seat? We'll ask if there's anybody who wants to...
Okay.
Is there anybody here to comment on the multiple addresses? Anybody? Anybody?
Yes.
Okay. So there's nobody here that wants to, you'd like to, come on up. Just give us your name and your address, please.
My name is Charles Edwards, and I actually live across the street from Doggy Daycare, and I own the Auto Doctor on the other side of the building from her. And I'm, I have no problem with Kathy with her business. What I see happening with more and more dogs coming is that there's no order to when they pick up and drop off. And she has no control over where her clients park. But they're more and more just pulling in front of our shop and throwing the car in park, turning the flashers on. And I'm like, this is my place of business. You can't park here. It's okay. I'll only be here for a couple minutes. And they walk away. And I'm not sure what we can do about that.
Right.
But to me, that's one of the bigger concerns. The other thing is that people pull in and block the sidewalk on a very regular basis, particularly in the morning when the kids are walking to school. I think that poses a safety thing. You know, I'm fine with her business. It's, you know, it's a great, great place for dogs to go. But in the, and the same thing, if they're walking them down the alley to the yard, they can go to the bathroom in the concrete, and it's not going to ruin the grass. So if that's part of what's going to happen, then that's...
I say something. I love my neighbor. We have applied for a loading zone permit, just so you know, from 2118 to 2120. So that, right now, we have a sign on our garage door that says, "Don't park here." But we put that sign up. And so we've requested a loading zone so that we can just not have people park there and just have them load in those spaces.
So Kathy?
So hopefully, that will take care of some of that.
Can I ask about that loading zone?
Sure.
That loading zone would be in front of your garage door?
Yes.
So, but not, it would not take a parking street, a parking space off the street?
No.
Because as we all know...
Yes.
Parking is horrendous. The biggest issue in the Hill Arts District.
I totally agree with you. Most of my staff, most of my staff takes public transportation. And if we drive, we always park in the Jehovah Witness parking lot. They let us park there in the day. We do have a Rexxle mobile, and we park that in the back of our place. But no, we will not take any spaces off the street. It's strictly to let people just pull in and pull out. And kind of free up Charlie, too.
Right. Okay. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, and the other concern is the, when they took over the back, like she said, she's planning on putting the soundproofing up. But, I mean, the dog barking is, it's really annoying in the back of our building, which is where our lunchroom is. So our guys go to take a break, and there's times when you can't carry a conversation. So as long as she's taking care of that, that's good. Where she's planning on going, that is directly next to our office where our waiting room is. So that's a huge concern. So as long as those are all met, and we're not going to get barked out where we, you know, we can't have a conversation in our own office, it's all good.
Great. Thank you very much.
So I would just, let me say, I think, remember, it wasn't a Doggy Daycare, but there was a lot of concern about noise when they put in a vet, they were putting in a vet clinic on the corner of Central Street and Prairie.
Prairie. No, not Prairie.
And all the neighbors came in and talked about the sound and how awful it was going to be, and my business is right above. And there was a condition about, you know...
Sound deadening.
Sound deadening is better than soundproofing, because that's really not possible.
That's right.
But, I mean, I walk by there all the time. I don't ever hear animals from inside there, for what it's worth. I'm not, different project, but...
That's her plan.
Is there anyone else? Come on up. Not you, Kathy.
Good evening. My name is Dorothea Patterson. I live in Evanston. I own a home here. Been here for 25 years.
And what's your address?
1812 Brummel.
Thank you.
I had a Chihuahua mixed puppy, mixed with Chizou. So he has a little fang sticking out. He looks a little scary sometimes. But he's my only child. I have no children. And I took him to PetSmart. And they had him in a little room with the glass. You guys seen it. And it's like somebody just sits on the floor and plays with them. And he would shake every time he went in. He would just shake, and he would shake. And I knew he didn't like it. And I didn't know where to take Poppy. And Kathy just opened up her place. And I went to Kathy, and I had tears in my eyes. And I was like, can you, can I bring my dog here? Poppy has been there, I was her first customer, he's been there from day one. And I think maybe you guys are misunderstanding like how this works. And I don't mean to insult in any way. Poppy comes in every morning about 6:30. I'm so glad you guys are open that early so that I can get to work. I'm in sales, and I work late nights. And I can pick him up at 6:30 at night. I'm surprised, because you were always there with, and your dog would walk in and come in all the time from the, from Auto Doctor. But anyway, Poppy loves to go there. And I've seen Kathy's business grow. And I think it was so cool that there was this woman-owned business that is growing and growing. And I remember saying to Kathy, "How is it going?" And she's like, "Well, I can pay rent." You know, she would say things like that. So they have grown, and the staff is amazing. It's clean. The dogs come in. My dog, he barks coming in. He needs the other dogs to know that he's on his way in. He thinks he's the king of the place. And he goes in, and then everyone gets a little riled up, and they calm down. They don't go for walks every day. It's only on nice days they might take him to the yard. But you guys have pretty much taken him all summer. They haven't gone to the yard. This is for a short period of time. When Poppy gets home, he's exhausted, and that's exactly what I need. If I am out of town, I need someplace to take him. And I don't want to take him to PetSmart where they have the cages. I think that's just, it's just not right. And that's not what I would want for my dog. So I am like 100% for this business. And I am just so proud of you, Kathy, for everything that you've done. And I think we should keep our business in our town. This is where I live, and this is where I like to support. And I pay taxes here, as we all do. And I think that this is just a great place for dogs to go. So I am 100% for the kennel, and I'm 100% for the business. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you very much.
Thank you guys for listening.
Appreciate it. Yep.
I'm Sally Barnum. I live at 1111 Church Street. It's a condominium building. I've lived in Evanston for 49 years. Came to go to grad school, stayed, raised a family, divorced, bought a condo, got the dog I wanted instead of the large hairy dogs we've been having for the previous 30 years. He's small. He's tense. He gets sunburned. And he is not a happy camper when he's home by himself. I retired a couple of years ago, but before that, for about four years before that, Kathy had him every day. And now he goes once or twice a week to keep his hand in. And I don't really trust, I have one other set of people that I trust with my dog when I leave town. And those are people that I've known for 45 years. This is a great place. And the fact that there really isn't a kennel set up, my dog now is getting dementia. He might have to stay in a kennel because he's getting so weird, you know, as he ages. But I still want him to go to Kathy's. And yeah, I totally agree with the folks at AutoDoc. Totally. It's crazed. And making that a loading zone might help some. We can only do what we can do. And yeah, if they want to send a cop around and, you know, plaster a few people with, the people I hate are the ones who come the wrong way on the street and park go in the opposite direction. Those people are scary. Anyway.
Thanks very much for your comments.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Is there anyone else?
I'll speak.
Since we are now running quite late, and we still have another one to get to, if you, I'm happy to hear you, but if you'd like to just come out, if you're going to agree with everyone else, if you can just say your name and agree...
I love daycare.
That's fantastic. Thank you. How about you? Do you have something new to say?
Well, for at least to upgrade, perhaps.
Okay. We're looking for new data. And if you can keep it short, please.
I will be as succinct as humanly possible. I promise.
Thank you. Name and address.
My name is Rachel Tollit. I live at 2118, 2127 Ashland. And I'm across the street from 2118. And I work part-time at the Auto Doctor for Charlie. And we live together in a house across the street, so I'm in the neighborhood. I also am a professor at Truman College. And so I am back and forth at strange times of the day, oftentimes with night classes, weekend classes. And I have to say, on behalf of the Auto Doctor and myself, we definitely don't want to in any way discourage a business member who's been such a wonderful part of the community. It's just a concern that things are arranged in a manner that makes sure that this goes off smoothly, that sound abatement is put in ahead of time and not after the fact. And I think as far as the traffic goes, one thing that I would like to suggest is that there are lots of daycares for children and dogs that have drop-off and pickup plans that are put in place. And I see it all the time when I drive down into the city at 7:30 in the morning or 6:30 in the morning. And I have seen it at a Doggy Daycare that I used to take a dog when I lived in the city of Chicago to, where they actually had a formal plan where people lined up, someone came out, they picked the dog's leash out of the car, they walked the dog in, the person drove away. They never had to leave their vehicle. So it was like dropping your kid off at daycare, except you're dropping off your dog. I'm an avid dog lover. I love the fact that I can walk out of my house in the morning and see all of Kathy's awesome dogs. You know, you have a couple of Basset Hounds that are my favorite. But, you know, I think that there could be a very formal plan put into place just to ensure that it's not like we hope the customers go to the loading zone. And that's my only thing.
Thank you.
The problem with that is we already have the cars lined all the way down the street waiting to get into Suds Car Wash. So if we have lines now on the other side of the street, there won't be any place for the buses that go down Ashland.
Thus the larger, thus the larger traffic concern. Yes. Thank you.
Anyone else? Last call. Okay. Thank you. Was there anything you wanted to say in summation? You don't have to. Again, we're running late, so...
No.
Fantastic.
Just judging because we're running late.
If you're going to stop talk, you got to come up, though. People need to be able to hear you.
No, I just want to say how much I love being in Evanston. I love the clients that I have. And we really are trying hard to be a part of the community and not just holding dogs. And so I hope you'll approve this project.
Thank you so much. And with that, we are going to close the record. Comments from the board?
I hear concerns that are legitimate, but that I think can be alleviated by conditions. And so I'm generally in favor of the project. and so I'm generally in favor of the project with appropriate conditions.
I agree with Scott. I am a dog owner. My dog has been to Rex's Place, not frequently, but I certainly, I understand the need for somewhere for your dog to be, if you're gonna be downtown or otherwise all day, and not just having your dog untened at the house. I do think there are conditions that we should be thoughtful about, but in general, I support this project.
Thank you. Anyone else? You guys have no comments. Nice. Okay.
I mean, I feel like if the community is okay with it, and everybody that lives around there is, you know, okay with the noise level, I support the project.
Great. Thank you. So let's talk briefly about conditions. So...
So what I heard, what I heard was the sound abatement issue, obviously, and to me, that seems to be not only for the new kennel building, but also sort of for the business generally.
Right.
I also heard a concern about the pickup and drop-off, and I do think it would be appropriate to require them to put a plan in place, or to work with the city to put in a plan in place.
Right.
And I don't think we've talked about hours of operation, but extending whatever they are seems like that would be the right condition.
Okay.
I also include in that the condition that the dogs not be walked through the yards in the neighborhood, or through Twigs Park.
Okay. I think one of the clarifications I'd like to make on those conditions is just to make sure that it happens, the sound abatement, is that we actually have staff review that with them, and to review it before a business license is issued, so that we make sure that it happens and that it's in place ahead of time, because we want to keep everybody happy. Okay, I generally agree with this as well. There are some concerns. I think we can take care of them. I'm also of the mind, you've been there for eight years, you're a part of the neighborhood, everybody knows there are dogs that bark there. So, if I didn't want to hear dogs, I wouldn't move into the neighborhood, so... All right, so let's go down the nine standards for a special use. And number one, it is one of the special uses specifically listed in the zoning ordinance. It is that, for that standard has been met. Number two is in keeping with the purposes and policies of the adopted comprehensive general plan and the zoning ordinance as amended from time to time. One of the goals is certainly to retain and enhance the diversity of business is, and this is certainly one of those businesses, we'd like to keep it, and we'd like to enhance it. We'd also like to strengthen our base by letting you be successful and providing more, more room for people in Evanston, to places for them to put their dogs. So I do believe that that standard has been met. Number three, it will not cause a negative cumulative effect when its effect is considered in conjunction with the cumulative effect of various special uses of all types on the immediate neighborhood, and the effect of the proposed type of special use upon the city as a whole. Now, I don't believe as a special use it will cause a negative cumulative effect. We'll talk about traffic in another issue, in another standard. So I don't believe it will cause a negative cumulative effect. You're modifying this to a minimal degree, you're just enhancing your business and making it slightly larger. So I do believe that that standard has been met. Number four, it does not interfere with or diminish the value of the property in the neighborhood. Again, I don't, I think that your neighbors have proven that they love you, and they like having that business in the neighborhood, and so increasing that in the neighborhood, that presence in the neighborhood certainly won't diminish the value of the property. So I do believe that that standard has been met. Number five, it can be adequately served by public facilities and services. As you said, we, it's, I heard it was near the bus line, and then there, it's right near a busy intersection, and we certainly have public facilities and services that already go to that part of town. So I do believe that that standard has been met. Number six, it does not cause undue traffic congestion. I think that there's been some, I've heard testimony that there's concerns about traffic congestion with the various other businesses in the, in the immediate area. And I think that although there will be some traffic congestion, I think it can be ameliorated with a good plan and working closely with your neighbors. So, once we condition that, I think we will have, that will be met, and so that standard gets met that way. Number seven, it preserves significant historical and architectural resources. That's not applicable. And it preserves, number eight, it preserves significant natural and environmental features, which is also not applicable. And number nine, it complies with all other applicable regulations of the district in which it is located, and other applicable ordinances, except to the extent that such regulations have been modified through the planned development process, or the grant of a variation. And that is specifically related to your business license, and getting that sound deadening and that sound abatement in ahead of time before you get your business license. So with that, I do believe that that standard will be met. So, lots of conditions. What are we, where are we on hours on this, by the way?
What's the existing...
That's an excellent question. I think they go from 6:30 in the morning till 6:30 at night. So if you want to go 6:00 AM to 7:00 PM to give her a little bit of slack, I think that's fine.
That won't address the overnight hours, but we could say that no drop, no drop-off or pickup after 6:30 PM.
Right, because you...
We don't have pickups after 6:30.
Right, because you close...
We can say hours of operation to the public.
Yeah, yes.
Right, so...
And we won't for the kennel either.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. I like that.
All right, I make a motion in the matter...
I'm sorry, Scott. One additional question on hours. Do we want to condition the hours of the outside playtime separately, or...
I think she's already addressing it by staying out of the hours of noise concerns. Yeah, so I think she's already addressing that.
And the noise ordinance would require that. All right, I make a motion in the matter ZBA 18ZMJV-0058, with respect to the many properties referenced under that number, that we recommend that City Council approve the special use requested, subject to the following conditions. One, that hours of operation to the public be limited from 6:00 AM to 7:00 PM. Two, that the properties collectively, and the Rex's Place business collectively, be required to fit and/or retrofit the businesses with sound abatement measures that are designed to minimize the amount of sound audible to neighbors, and to work with the neighbors to the extent there are complaints about the same, after that work has been done. Three, that the businesses be prohibited from walking dogs in the, in Twigs, in Twigs Park and the grassy areas in the neighborhood. Four, that the applicant put in place a...
Pickup and drop-off.
A loading zone for pickup and drop-off for animals, that takes into account the traffic in the neighborhood and the nearby businesses, and work with city staff for approval of the same. And last, that the business be operated and developed otherwise in accordance with the testimony and evidence submitted.
Second.
It's removed and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And with that, you will go to City Council with a recommendation for approval. Good luck with your project. Okay, say may need a break? Push it on. Fantastic. We're gonna move on to 90 to 92 Kedzie Street. And Melissa, will you read that into the record, please?
Matt Rogers, zoning consultant, appeals the zoning administrator's decision to deny minor zoning relief, case number 18ZMNv0046, to construct a six-foot fence in the front yard where six-foot front yard fences are not permitted, zoning code section 6467F. The zoning board of appeals is the determining body for this case. Documents included as part of the record include: appeal application submitted June 21st, 2018; fence variance application submitted May 22nd, 2018; plat of survey, site plans, elevations and renderings; existing fence easement documents; fence variation public notice; fence variation final determination notice; letters of objection; images of property; aerial view of property; zoning map of property; and preservation commission meeting minutes excerpt of June 12th, 2018.
Okay. Mr. Rogers, please tell us about your project.
Thank you. Good evening. We're here tonight to appeal the decision of the zoning administrator in the matter of 9092 Kedzie. The reason for our denial related to a number of issues in the second standard of fences, those being the incompatible uses next door, which we're not arguing. The, the one that we are looking at is the increasing in safety. I'll run through the project just a little bit first, and then I'll get into the details on why we're appealing the decision. Basically, the homeowner is looking to place a six-foot fence in the front yard of their property at 90 and 92 Kedzie. This particular property has had a fence in a portion of the front yard, or at least what was the front yard at one time. The homeowner, when they purchased the property, was looking to extend that existing fence into the rest of the front yard. When we actually got the plat of survey, we discovered just how far back the front property line sits from the sidewalk, and realized there was a little more room there than we initially thought. So what we have, we have done is we have looked at putting a fence in this place along the front property line, and the fence would be six-foot tall, like I mentioned. It would be a wrought iron fence, five-foot wrought iron fence atop a one-foot wall with six-foot, six-foot piers at the corners. We submitted two different site plans for this, depending upon whether or not we were allowed to tie into the front fence that currently exists, and an easement that was granted years ago and then expired. It was leased to the property owners by the city. A six-foot fence was constructed on that property, and then the lease expired, and the six-foot fence remained in that property. So, the plan that you currently see up on the board is if we were to get that gray area, which was mostly part of an easement in the 1983, City Council granted an easement for that, we would just be seeking to basically get that same area. We also extended it a little bit further to the west to include area for a double gate to go in. So this was option number one that we presented. Option number two, which is on the next page, actually follows the existing property line that is there. So on this one, there is no easement in the front. We actually follow the property line of the existing property, which sits about 18 feet back from the front sidewalk in front of 92 Kedzie. We feel that the, we have had some discussions with the neighbors. I know a couple of them are here. We, we have talked with them. I think we've been able to reach an accord on the front yard fence. They have expressed some concerns about the height of landscaping, about the opacity of the fence, those types of issues. We are pledging to keep them informed as we finalize any fence plan, because obviously, depending on whether or not we get the front yard easement, will change how the fence is laid out, as well as moving through all of the aspects of the fence. But we are committed to doing a fence that is meeting with the opacity that we've discussed, of a wrought iron variety with the piers in the front yard. We are aware also of easement across the back of the property, and we are pledging to honor that as well. In moving into the specifics of the denial by the zoning administrator, and where we feel that was an error, we feel that a fence can be granted in the front yard to increase safety, and we feel it would be appropriate for this particular property. Number of homes in the city of Evanston are abutting parks, or across from parks. I actually put together a little survey here, and I will share this.
We're gonna go with appellants Exhibit A and B.
So what I've handed you is a list of fences in this area, front yard fences in this area of Evanston. A number of them also are along parks, like I mentioned. A number of those are shorter fences, three to four feet tall, and we are aware of that. We feel, though, that, that having a fence in the front yard in order to keep children and dogs in, as well as protect the safety of the persons living in the property, is paramount, and a six-foot fence would be more appropriate in this particular location for us. The city has already determined that putting a fence between public and private areas is acceptable. Most often, the fence is constructed on the private area, not the public area. And as I mentioned, under previous zoning, actually, excuse me, under previous ordinances passed by the City Council, a six-foot wrought iron fence was constructed and allowed to stand still at this point, and a separate three-and-a-half-foot front yard fence was approved by the zoning board of appeals back in 1984. We feel that, if you look at the placement of fences on the chart that I've handed out, you will see that there are a number of them along parks in particular, and beaches. And we feel that because of where our home is located, immediately abutting a park, that it would be appropriate for us also to have a front yard fence.
Because I'm not quick enough to go through this, how many of these are six-foot fences versus...
There are eight six-foot fences listed in there.
Out of 27.
Out of 27.
So most of these are at a much lower height?
Correct.
At three or four feet?
Correct. But if you look at the ones that do immediately abut a park and are not across the street from a park, or adjacent to a park, those tend to be taller fences. The one at 943 Edgemere in particular, there's one on Sheridan Square that abuts another park there, and there is one at 901 Edgemere Court as well, that abuts Clark Square Park.
So Matt, why can't a compliant fence achieve the objectives being sought?
Because it does not secure the front of the property. And, I mean, it's no secret now as to who owns this property.
Right, but why can't, so why can't a three-foot fence properly set back from the front of the property meet, meet the objectives of keeping the children and dogs in, which I'm not sure really warrants relief anyway? But, the safety issue is the one I'm focused on. Why can't a three-foot fence at the, at the correct location achieve that objective?
Because it's very easy to get over a three-foot fence. I can step over a three-foot fence almost, depending on what's on top of it. And we are looking to secure the property, not necessarily from dangerous people, but what we call nuisance intrusions. Because of the particular celebrity that we have living here, it's different than a number of other people. People do want to just knock on your door and discuss what he does for a living, to drop off presents for him, things like this. And what we're trying to do is secure the front of the property, so that that doesn't happen.
Don't you think that by, by the landscaping that you've suggested, right, which is quite lush, and there's landscaping in front, and then landscaping behind?
Correct.
You don't think that's gonna inhibit people?
I think it, I think it will...
I think it'll be a real challenge to get through there.
I think it will to some level, but we'll still have access through the driveway. People will still be able to access the property through the driveway.
Okay, so why aren't we limiting this just to the driveway?
Because the dogs can get through...
Well, you can put up, you can put up an electronic fence and keep dogs in your yard. My neighbors have them, many of my neighbors have them. I mean, I...
That has been suggested in my homeowner, as opposed to anything that will shock their dogs.
That's fine, right? I mean, I understand that. It's fine for your owner to take a position on that. At the same time, you don't need a six-foot fence to keep your dog in. Right?
Right.
So your neighbor, your client, your client was aware of the safety risks of his property at the time he bought it? The safety risks to him?
Correct.
Okay. And he lives there now?
He lives there now.
And has he had any nuisance intrusions since he moved in?
He has not had any in particular, although I do know that on two occasions when I've been at the property, one was the day that it broke who was there. News crews were out front of the property.
Were you the leak?
I was not the leak. And we did, we have heard of people being interested in the fact that he is in the property, and wanting to know where it is, identifying it in the neighborhood.
That's, to me, I mean, understood. And to me, that's part of what being a celebrity is. People walk by celebrities' houses. It doesn't necessarily mean they need to have a six-foot fence in their yard to keep people, people are still gonna walk by anyway.
Right, yes. People will, people will, even if we put a six-foot fence, people will try to get pictures over it, et cetera, et cetera.
Right.
What we're doing is just trying to deter and make the homeowner feel as safe as they can.
Can you address the fence that is there now? Is that...
Is that what is described as the temporary construction?
That's the temporary fence.
That is the nicest temporary fence I've ever seen.
So let me go a little further here. So behind the wood fence is actually a chain link fence.
Okay.
We... The homeowners, when they moved in, told us they wanted a fence up. We were given about 10 days in order to get a fence put in. We contacted several fence companies. It was impossible to get a fence in during that time. So what we had done, as we had talked to city staff, and because of the fact there will be construction occurring this fall to winter on the property...
And that construction extends the property west into the adjacent lot?
Correct, correct. There's talk of putting a small addition onto that end of the property.
Okay.
We talked with the city staff about getting, basically, our fence up so we could secure the property for the dogs and children at this time. And then we would keep that up through the construction period for the addition to the house.
The wood fence?
The wood fence was added on so that people did not have to look at a chain link fence. And that is still a temporary fence that's not been set in concrete. Those wood panels can actually be pulled out.
Without revealing anything that would compromise your client's safety, does he have other safety measures at the property?
Yes.
He has a burglar alarm, I'm sure. Some sort of private security?
I do not know 100% for sure on that, so I can't answer.
Okay, but he has other safety measures?
Yes, there's other security measures on the home.
Where exactly is the property line? You mentioned easement on the first option. Where exactly is the property line?
Does this work? Yeah. So the gray area here, there is no current easement on the property, in the front of the property.
The front, yeah. I see it at the bottom, but there is nothing on the survey, on the plat of survey, that says easement.
Correct. So, do you have the plat, Melissa?
Is it before or after this?
I think it's before. So this is the current plat that was done during close. So the property lines are the property lines. I can't see this thing.
So the property line is the straight line that runs east-west?
There's a straight line right here that runs right there.
Right. So what actually makes you make an option that goes out of the property line with the fence?
Because there currently is a fence standing in that area, and in 1983, the city leased that property to the previous homeowner. And so when we saw that six-foot fence that was standing in that front area, we had desired to attach into that space, and in doing the research, discovered that there had been an easement that had actually ceased to exist 25 years ago. But the conditions have remained the same as they were during the terms of the lease.
But currently, this area is not leased to the new owner?
Correct, correct. That's currently public right-of-way.
Okay, thank you.
Matt, I appreciate that the public park, you know, I know that they don't see any adverse activity because it's a park, but there's a lot of activity that goes on at Clark Square Park. And I can understand that a homeowner who was right on the park there would want some additional safety and privacy, because even late in the evening, there are people who go to the rocks for, you know, something on the rocks. But anyway, so I do appreciate all of that. I think that my biggest concern is the feedback that came through from the neighbors and from their concept and understanding of that Swigger development, that it was developed with a clear intent that the spaces be open, and that this is suddenly not only violating the intent of the original design, but also cutting off views that are actually in the terms of Swigger subdivision, that those lines of sight not be obscured or obstructed.
Correct, and those sight lines are in the rear of the property, and we're talking about a front yard fence on this particular case. That's what we're asking ZBA to address.
Okay. So there's no...
We're aware, and have talked with the neighbors, we are aware of the existing sight line easement across the 70 rear feet of the property.
Right.
And we do not intend to violate that easement.
There was an issue raised earlier that I want to better understand. Is there an opportunity through landscaping to have a lower fence across the majority of the front of the property line with some higher fence line across the driveway that would still keep pets and children in and give some measure of security to the property without extending a six-foot fence across the entire front property line?
I think if that is the only option available to us, we would consider it. We would still consider securing a fence probably of a higher, of a six-foot height throughout the rest of the property in order to provide what we can there on Bill by Right. With the exception, I'm sorry, the area along the Riprap Rock, along the lakefront, we don't intend to put a six-foot fence there. The plan is to put a four-foot wrought iron fence there or aluminum-style fence there in order to keep the children and the dogs from climbing onto the rocks.
Have you considered, since what's allowed along a type-one street is a four-foot fence, have you considered doing the four-foot fence, and that combined with your landscaping would actually provide enough buffer?
We're not...
Did you just say that? Oh, my God.
Yeah, that's what we were just talking about.
Sorry, I was having a side conversation.
That was something that we did, that, yes, I mean, it was discussed. And like I said, if that is what ZBA is willing to grant us, I think we would take that information...
Is that preferable to moving it to keeping the six-foot fence? To go to the four... Sorry, to put the six-foot fence in a compliant location? Is it preferable to have the...
There is no...
Sure, you can be three feet behind the front.
No, no, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I was flipping what you were asking me. Go ahead and finish your question.
So the options are, we can deny, and you can put the six-foot fence in a compliant location, which is three feet behind the front of the house. Or we can talk about a four-foot fence, which is what is similar to what happens on a type-one street, and there's a precedent for that in the city. And then that combined with your landscaping can achieve the goals of what you're looking for, which is added security. By having enough landscape buffer, right, you will stop people from trying to jump, which I understand is one of the bigger issues, because the four-foot fence will keep the dogs in theoretically. So those are the two options. Is there a preference?
I think the preference is to try to secure the front of the property in some way.
Okay. So that's the bigger concern, is to actually get, to keep public away from front doors?
Correct.
Are you planning this wrought iron fence all the way around? It's going to be this super fancy fence all the way around?
Currently, that's what we're proposing, is a six-foot all-around, except for along the Riprap Rock. That would be the four-foot.
Are there any questions from anyone else? Oh, no, sorry. I meant from the board. Sorry, sorry, sorry. You guys will get your chance. Just give us a second. Any more questions from people on the board? Everybody's good. Is there anything else you wanted to say right now?
Not right now, thank you.
Perfect, thank you. All right, neighbors, come on up.
All right.
You guys start with your name and your address, and it's 925, which means you got like three minutes.
Okay. Pierre Durand, 747 Sheridan Road.
Yep.
Matt just must have given you pictures of fences.
Yes.
But he never mentioned that in these parks, it's never with a front yard. You understand that, Newans?
I do, except that the pictures are for front yards.
They're really front yards with six-foot fence? Because I haven't been privy to that information.
Four-foot fences, but if you would like to look, I'm sure he'd be happy to have you look at it.
And now the thing is, how many properties in Evanston on the lakefront have a fence right on the water? Just to Matt, it's just a simple question.
Okay.
Also, what I can say is, you know, I've been at 747 Sheridan Road for 18 years. I've been trying to reclaim the spirit of Howard Vender and Shaw, the architect of the house, and I've been able to remove the house with the previous owner. And the idea is to keep the sense of openness, and here I am in a situation, and we're setting a precedent. Also, this owner is going to live maybe in two years, and what will happen? And this is the situation I don't like. Because here, I have never been able to meet that owner, because his feels is so important, they cannot talk to neighbors, and I feel this is a little insulting. And okay, he wants to put his fences and all that, but I hope you understand my point of view.
Thank you.
I think I'm within the swing of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Come on up. Alderman Nguyen.
I met with, I'm Alderman Nguyen, Third Ward, 1130 Hinman Avenue. I met with a whole group of the neighbors, including Mr. Jerome and the next nearest neighbor, with Mrs. Darvish last, excuse me, the white, the female...
Mrs. Klein.
Yes, Mrs. Klein. Okay. Last Wednesday night, we had a two-and-a-half-hour meeting with Matt Rogers, and with an explanation of what was being proposed and the reasons for this being proposed. Matt gave the neighbors and me the image of a wrought iron fence with the six-foot pedestals and described it. We walked it. There was both the wooden fence that was there now, the temporary construction fence, and there was a pink string where this idea of the proposed fence would be. We discussed at great length the easement, which the city let expire, but has been, the homeowner maintained the property all of this time. The City Council will get to that later. It was a dollar a year.
Yeah, it's adorable.
Yeah. So at the end of that meeting, we went point by point through all of the things that there was agreed consensus on, and the neighbors understood the issue about where the issues for the request for the six-foot fence in the front yard, and that what the materials would be, and there would be landscaping behind it, but not higher than approximately six feet. The view easement was going to be followed in the backyard, and that there will be a wrought iron fence all the way around the property, with the exception of a four-foot fence along the rocks because they have small children. Standing in the driveway there, we went point by point through all of these issues, and there was consensus from a large group of the neighbors. I told the neighbors then that I would come to the ZBA or let communicate through staff that that was the consensus on this. I recognize that this...
What was the consensus when they agreed that?
They agreed, they understood that. They understood what the six-foot fence, wrought iron fence was, and where the homeowner would like to have it. And they agreed that they understood the reasons and that they agreed that that would be acceptable to them, as long as the landscaping was kept no higher than the fence or, you know, approximately, and the view easement was completely recognized, and that the materials would be substantially as were shown here. You know, I recognize that, I was on the council when we rewrote the entire fence ordinance. So I went through all of that. I recognize issues of front yard fences generally. I know that we do have some times when we do permit them. If there's a one solution that was suggested by a neighbor was if the concern is, I mean, it's somewhat particularized to this homeowner, that the ZBA could, in its wisdom, make it...
Removable.
Cause it to be removed when this homeowner sells the property.
Most of the things that we grant variations on, the standards require that the hardship be unique to the property rather than to the homeowner.
I recognize that. You know, I do think that this property is, it's the only one now facing Clark Square Park. Clark Square Park, like all of our lakefront parks, gets active, and sometimes active in antisocial behavior at night, just to be honest with you. And so I do think that there are times when, if I were a neighbor who was immediately adjacent to a park, I'd want a fence.
Do you think it sets a good precedent for the city to make an accommodation for a famous celebrity that moves into one of our homes to give them the ability to put things where they want on the property, no matter what the ordinances say about it? I mean, in my view...
Right.
The concern here is a safety concern, but the client, the applicant, can put the sized fence they want to in a different location from where they're asking to put it.
I understand.
And to me, that alleviates the safety concern.
Right.
So what's, so I guess it seems to me we're being asked to do something different because it's a celebrity, or consider something different because it's a celebrity that doesn't really change, that doesn't really affect the need that's being articulated.
You know what? I understand that. What I'm reporting to you is what the neighbors have...
Okay, fair enough.
Have come to an accord on. I mean, if you all decide to do a four-foot fence, or to grant, to decide it should be limited to a four-foot fence, that would be fine. I just wanted to fulfill my obligation to the neighbors. I recognize that we want to be as fair to everybody, to every homeowner, as we can, and make no particular exceptions one way or the other. That's why they're applying to a variance, for a variance to you, you know, and why it's not as a right.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you for your deliberations. It's been an interesting night.
Thank you.
Yes?
Just one moment. I've been living for 18 years at 747, and I am on the park, and I, the police, I mean, comes after 11:00 PM, and except during the Fourth of July memorial day and all that, the park is relatively quiet. And I think the police department has done a very good job so far. In terms of the groupies, I haven't seen any change from the previous owner. And also, if you grant that fence, why should not I get a similar fence? Because if there are dangerous people who may come, I may need to protect myself as well. You understand? And I personally do not look forward to that, but I could, because it would be, maybe they would be finding those dangerous people who may try to get through.
Right. I understand the cute argument you're making about it, which is taken, but I think the argument the owner is, is that they're only dangerous to him because of who he is. They're not dangerous to you.
Right, but they could try to come through my property. You see the point?
Yeah, no, I understand the point you're making.
Because when you start with paranoia, you know, there is no limit. It's a parrot ladder. You get my point? Thank you very much.
Yeah, come on up. Just give us your name and address, please.
My name is Carla Price, and I live at 814 Sheridan Road. I've lived across from the park for over 40 years. And my question would be, if he was so concerned about safety, why would he buy right there on the park? I mean, I've lived here 40 years, I've never had an incident at all. But, you know, you're talking about hardships. He's creating a hardship for himself and trying to change the rules and regulations of the city of Evanston. And I just feel that he should not be allowed, because he's a special person, to have an exception to the rules of the city. And this is my view, and I just wanted to convey that.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? If we can have your name and address, please.
I'm Alan Price, and I live in the same house as Carla. We've been there for 40 years. We have a fence. And when we had to replace our fence, the fence has been there since 1940. the fence has been there since 1914. It's a low fence, and the entire block has the same fence. And when we and our neighbors decided it was time to replace the fence because it had corroded, we were required to replace the fence with one that looked as close as it could to the original fence. We have standards in our neighborhood because it's a preservation area. And this house falls into that category. And this would be a violation of the preservation standards of that neighborhood by having a six-foot fence and maybe even a four-foot fence. That's all I'm having to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Nobody else? Okay. So, we're gonna let Mr. Rogers come up. Some summations.
So, in summation, basically, we would request that we get a six-foot fence. That is what we specifically requested. We would like to have that. The one thing I would like to clarify, and Alderman Winn, correct me if I'm wrong. We had agreed on landscaping being in the eight-foot range, not the six-foot range. Is that correct?
It was eight foot, it was six to eight feet.
Right, right. I just wanted to make sure that we were okay with that. The idea behind this is because of the fact that we are the only property along this particular stretch, we intend to landscape the front one way or another in order to try to blend in with the landscaping that currently exists in Mr. Duran's side yard to continue that on down the street. Our hope would be that the zoning board of appeals would grant us a six-foot fence, which would not be extremely visible in the landscaping. The idea is to try to hide it in the landscaping. And we feel that a six-foot fence over a four-foot fence gives us the additional security that we're seeking and would not be noticeably different from the street. And so, that's what we are seeking.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And with that, we're gonna go close the record. Thoughts? I think I'd like Melissa to just go through the three standards for a fence variation because they are very different from what we normally go through.
Sure, but before she does that, I think the other important standard to remember is that this is an appeal from the zoning administrator's decision. And so, really, the ultimate standard is whether the zoning administrator did something that was clearly erroneous or arbitrary or ill-considered. So, the standards for a fence variation matter.
Yep.
But it's really only whether the zoning administrator did something with respect to those standards that was, that meets those other criteria.
Except that we have the ability to affirm, deny, or modify.
We do, but it, but, but what we're deciding is an appeal, right? So, we don't want to, in my view, we shouldn't be creating a procedure where hundreds of applicants for minor variations come in and say, "I want you to consider anew what the standards are because I don't like the decision I got." It's really, the whole point of having an appeal procedure is for us to give deference to the zoning administrator in a way that says, "Did they get it obviously wrong? That's clearly erroneous." Or, "Was it arbitrary?" That's the point of the appeal process. It's not for us to give what in law is called de novo review, basically, starting over.
Well, to that, I just want to quickly add that we have sometimes found that where the zoning administrator may have acted within the zoning ordinance correctly, that context, in context, it needed to be reconsidered. So, for example, with the side yard issue we had with the patio.
The side yard patio, yeah.
Right. You know, it wasn't an indictment of the zoning administrator. It was just taking it in a different context or a broader context. Just want to bring that.
Just, yeah, just because I don't have them. They are on the screen, but.
Who can read those?
I can't, so.
And they're about a paragraph and a half.
Those are with the staff explanations as well.
Oh, okay.
So, standard one, the requested variation will not be materially detrimental to the public welfare or injurious to the use, enjoyment, or property values of adjoining neighbors. Two, the additional screening, additional height or requested location achieved through the variation will assist in reducing noise, screening incompatible adjacent uses, or increase safety to the owners of the subject property or abutting properties. Three, in no event shall a variation be granted that would permit a fence taller than 30 inches to be located within 20 feet of the corner curb line of an intersection. Thank you.
Mary Beth?
Yeah.
I have a couple of questions perhaps for staff.
Yeah.
So, what is allowed? What are the options in terms of what is allowed as of right here?
A fence up to six feet in height that is no closer than three feet behind the front facade of the house. And then extending to anywhere else into the rest of the yard.
Okay. And then what about the issue that Mary Beth raised earlier about a four-foot fence? Is that allowed as of right? Or what is, how is that considered?
It is not. It would either require a variation or for that block of Kedzie Street to become a type-one street, where it would then be permitted by right, up to four feet.
Who decides if that Kedzie at that location becomes a type-one street?
It requires a petition by at least two-thirds of the property owner, of the owners owning property on the street.
Okay.
And then it is reviewed by the PND Committee and up to city council.
Got it, thank you.
So, I have a thought I'll start with. So, first of all, I am looking at this through the lens of, did the zoning administrator get it clearly erroneous? That's sort of my, I think that's what we're meant to do here, one. Two, to me, the keeping the kids and the dog in is not something that requires the relief being sought. So, really, the question to me is, is there a safety concern? And I find persuasive the fact that the appellant purchased the property, knowing the safety risk existed, has moved into the property, and hasn't experienced any of the safety problems that may have been a concern since moving in. And one would think that would be, that that safety risk per se would be greatest upon moving in. Whereas after time, it would be less unique that the person lived there. I don't think that we, as a zoning board, should be granting exceptional relief from the zoning ordinance because of the celebrity status of an applicant. And I also think, I also don't think we should be granting extraordinary relief when there is not a real safety concern, but only a perceived one. And this applicant has a perceived safety concern. He wants to feel safer in his home. There isn't a real safety concern, at least at present, in that there hasn't been any actual invasion of the property. And there haven't even been any of the nuisance-related appearances. I forget what the exact phrase was. I do think it's out of character with this neighborhood to have a six-foot fence running the length of the property. And it's out of character with the lakefront to have that. And I am dead-set against granting the appeal for those reasons.
Thank you.
I agree with you, Scott. I actually stood right there at the Fourth of July. There was a huge crowd. And it was not a safety concern to this property. I feel like the police close that park at night, and they patrol that park on a regular basis. And I feel like it's just this celebrity that's asking for a special variance. I think we should uphold the zoning administrator's decision in this case.
Thank you.
I would agree with this way of thinking. I think that this is a special request because of the current owner. And I think that the zoning board should base its decisions on property, not on current owner. That's our mission. So, that's my thinking.
Thank you.
I would commend what it sounds like were significant efforts in meeting with the neighbors in trying to use tools to envision how the property would look. It sounds like that was well-done. And I appreciate those efforts to engage the neighbors. However, that said, I do agree with the comments generally voiced by other members here.
Thank you.
The only comment that I would make is that the large fence along the former easement has been there forever. It's kind of a fixture in the neighborhood. And the lot line being 18 feet behind that, it seems as though a four-foot fence along the property line would, being so far removed from the sidewalk, would, I don't think that the neighbors had objections to that. So, I mean, I like to give some accommodation to any new neighbors who are coming and trying to improve and secure their properties. So, I just, I want to make that comment.
So, help me understand what you're suggesting. Are you suggesting that?
I would like to, I would like to allow a four-foot fence along the front property line. And then they can put the six-foot fence along the rest of the property line as proposed because they can do that by right.
They can landscape the front of the property by right also.
Right.
And not have a four-foot fence.
So, I find this interesting because.
The neighbors who live along Sheridan Road, right across the street, have, is it a four-foot fence?
No, three, three, right this way.
Okay, so.
We can't engage with the public.
But it is at the property line, running the whole length of the street.
Mary, Mary.
Oh.
We can't engage. We've closed the record.
Sorry, I'm sorry. Excuse me.
Sorry. We've closed the record. So, I find this interesting because this is, this is an interesting one because of the three standards, not one of them is a hardship. The first standard is that the variation will not be materially detrimental to the public welfare. I don't find it to be materially detrimental to the public welfare. I think that having the property line 18 feet off the sidewalk is akin to a front yard. And having that fence that far back from the sidewalk is essentially where a house would be. And so, it's sort of doing the same thing that it would be when it was at a, when it's in a required location of being three feet behind the front yard setback. So, I find that that standard has been met. I also think that the additional screening, the additional screening, additional height or requested location achieved through the variation will assist in reducing noise, screening incompatible uses, or safety. None of that has to do with who the owners are, right? There is additional screening given by the additional height. All of those things get met. And the last one is that it's not too tall. And it's not too tall. So, I guess I'm struggling with how these standards weren't met. Because even staff's notes are that that number one, that that standard wasn't met. It didn't say the standard was not met. There's no comment on it. So, I think that that standard was met. So, that's where I differ from you guys. Normally, I am the hard line on that the hardship goes with the property, not with the human who inhabits the house. Unfortunately, for a fence, there is no hardship.
But in the way you just interpreted the standards, Mary Beth, when would a six-foot fence on the property line not be appropriate? The way you just, because I could come in and say the same thing.
Because I think that one of the things that we certainly look at is when the size of the property is larger, right? So, there have been other properties that are on lakefronts where there, clearly, there's enough land to support lot coverage and those sorts of things. And that's not what they're asking for. They're asking for a side yard setback or something like that. And so, we make that accommodation because of the size of the lot and because of where, because of the amount of space around it. And I think that this is a unique situation where you've got so much space around it that it has no effect. It would definitely have an effect on a 25-foot lot on Sherman where the front yard is nine feet deep. That is a whole different thing. This is just, it's, the house isn't right there. The house is set further back. And there just seems like there's enough space that it's not causing anybody any issue.
None of the standards you read mention the size of the lot.
No, but it does say that it will not be materially detrimental to the public welfare or injurious to the use, enjoyment, or property values of adjoining neighbors.
But here, there are lots of adjoining neighbors saying it will be.
No, I heard from Alderman Winn that a lot, that the majority of the neighbors now say that that's okay. That they've come to an agreement, that they understand that six feet is, that six, they've come to the agreement that six feet's okay, and that the landscaping will be between six and eight feet. That's what I heard. But, so, again, we've closed the record, so we can't engage. But Alderman Winn came here as a representative of that group of people. By a group, I'm assuming it's more than one and somehow less than 50. So, there are some neighbors, there's some neighbors in that group. And so, those people thought that it wasn't going to be a problem for them, that it wasn't injurious to them. So, that's what I'm looking at.
We have other neighbors who are saying that it is affecting their enjoyment of their property.
Right, but it's never just the one, right? We always think about the collective. And the collective, I think Mr. Duran was even part of that meeting with Alderman Winn. And although he's here to voice his concerns about it, I believe that he was part of that agreement. And I'm not trying to convince you. It's just, I'm having a tough time seeing how.
But a compliant fence would achieve the same goals.
But it doesn't, we're not, none of the standards here are that it's the minimum change necessary, right?
But it's a variation, right? I mean, it's.
But we have to go by the variance standards. And one of the three variance standards is not that it's the minimum change necessary.
No, but in deciding whether to grant a variation, I think you have to ask, what is the purpose of the variation being sought? And here, the purpose of variation being sought doesn't require the relief being sought. So, in my view, it's a common sense question to say, "You don't need this variation." You have a concern that can be met by erecting a compliant fence.
I'm further troubled by the suggestion even that at the group meeting, there was, shall I say, a capitulation to the neighbors that they could perhaps have the fence removed when this particular individual moved from the house, which says that these hardships are not about the property. They are about the individual.
But again, none of the standards are for a hardship. None of the standards ask for there to be a hardship, an actual hardship. And you guys know that I am a stickler on that darn hardship. None of these variance standards say that there has to be a hardship. None of them. And so, it may be that the variance standards are poorly written, and there should be a hardship. But this is just like the case of the coach houses last week, right? We may not have liked it, but city council said, "Yep, you can have a coach house in your backyard. Therefore, you get a coach house in your backyard," right? It's sort of that, that's unfortunately what I'm seeing here.
City council hasn't changed the zoning ordinances with regard to fencing, though.
But what I'm saying is, there's no hardship standard for a variance standard for the fence.
But there's also nothing about the lot size. I mean, you're, I understand you're reading it in a way that you think you ought to read it. And I'm saying, we ought to be reading it in a way that says, "Why are they doing this?" And there's a safety concern that's been expressed, and it's not addressed by the relief being sought. The safety concern can be met by a compliant fence. The safety concern is currently being met without a fence.
Actually, it's being met with the construction fence.
Fair enough. And with whatever additional security measures applicant has made.
Because what I understood with being the security concern was not just keeping kids and dogs in, but keeping people out from your front door. And I know that you're going to say that that's relative, that's related specifically to the celebrity of the applicant. But, you know, if I felt that I was being.
But the testimony is that there have been zero instances of that happening.
So, what we want to do is wait until it happens. So, what we want to do is wait until it happens. Because what we know, though, is that other people who are in this line of work, that this does happen to them. Right? So...
Do we want to over-police?
No.
I mean, do we want to go that far?
Should we consider...should we consider a compromise solution here?
To me, a compromise that would make sense, if any, is allowing a fence that matches the character of what's in the neighborhood.
Which is that four-foot fence.
Which is the waist-high fence.
Right. The four-foot wrought iron fence, which is what they've talked about, and then with additional landscaping.
It's whatever foot is the neighborhood. I don't know that it's four feet high. To me, that's a compromise that could be discussed.
I agree.
And I think you can make whatever depth of landscaping behind that that you want to, to make jumping the fence a non-issue on such a large property that can afford landscaping feet-deep.
I don't disagree with that. I don't disagree with that assessment. It's just...those are my thoughts. So, anyway. Yep.
We're the determining body for this.
We are, because it's an appeal. So, we're going to go through the standards. So, feel free to disagree with me.
So, Mary Beth, you want to go through the standards on the six-foot fence, in consideration of the six-foot fence as a...
That's because that's what the zoning administrator denied.
So, we would have to uphold or we would have to consider that before we would consider any sort of compromise? How are we presenting this?
That's an excellent question, and I don't remember how we did that last time. Because with that whole side yard, that side patio nonsense, we sort of solved it in upholding the zoning administrator's decision, but allowing her time to modify it and...
I would suggest, given that it sounds like there is a difference of opinion and only three standards, first, go through what the original request was.
Right.
And then, pending that outcome, if you want to readdress the standards with a different fence height...
Okay.
Then go that way.
Okay. Luckily, it's only three standards. So, we're going to go pretty fast. Okay, so the variance standards. The first standard...there are three variance standards for a fence variation. And the first is that the requested variation will not be materially detrimental to the public welfare or injurious to the use, enjoyment, or property values of adjoining neighbors. I've heard testimony that the adjoining neighbors do not find the six-foot fence to be injurious. That information may not have been available to the zoning administrator at that time. And so, I believe that that standard has been met.
I believe it has not been met, because I believe that granting variations for a requested purpose that don't serve the purpose are injurious to the public welfare.
Also, I don't think that standard has been met, because we have heard testimony here this evening from neighbors who do find the addition of six-foot fencing around the perimeter of the property to impact their enjoyment of their own properties.
Number two, the additional screening, additional height, or requested location achieved through the variation will assist in reducing noise, screening incompatible adjacent uses, or increase safety to the owners of the subject property or abutting properties. I do believe that that standard has been met, because there's been testimony that there is a concern by the applicant, by the owner, of security concerns at the property. And by being able to have that fencing go across the full width of the property and not just from behind the front wall of the house, would be beneficial. So, I do believe that that standard has been met.
I believe this standard is not met, because I don't believe there's been any evidence that it would increase safety, in that there's no actual safety problem at present. There is a perceived security problem, which has not materialized, and that can be and seems to be being served in other ways.
And number three, in no event shall a variation be granted that would permit a fence taller than 30 inches to be located within 20 feet of the corner curb line of an intersection. That is not applicable. So, given that...we're not doing a motion, right? Are there motions? When we do...okay. All right. So, then I need a motion. Please.
I move in the matter ZB...shoot. I move in the matter ZBA 18ZMJV-0059 with respect to 90 through 92 Kedzie Street, that we uphold the zoning administrator's determination to deny the minor variation requested.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Nay. So, with a vote of 4 to 1, the zoning administrator's decision is upheld. So, is there a second motion that we want to entertain? Oh, standards. Okay. Sorry, 5-1. I can't do math. All right. So, the variance standards for the second option we were considering, which is to allow them to do a fence, a wrought iron fence that is consistent with the height, that is the established height in the neighborhood, as determined by whom? As determined by preservation?
Determined by a date measure.
I would say that...I would say that that would be a good...
Preservation.
Shout-out. Have preservation determine what's inappropriate. It might not be exactly the exact same height, but it might be four feet.
Right. It might be three foot nine. It might be three foot 11 and a half.
Right.
Just let them deal with it. Okay.
Just to provide input on that, the preservation commission did already make a recommendation on the variance itself, and recommended against the variance.
Okay.
But might they have...
The fence would require a variance.
Is it feasible for the...
But if we approve the variance, don't they have to weigh in with some logical piece of information?
They would be required to approve a certificate of appropriateness for the fence.
Right.
But I could see some concern if you're leaving up to them to determine the height of the fence, if they've already made a recommendation, that there should not be a fence in the location.
Okay.
Did they say no fence in the location, or no to a six-foot fence in the allocation?
It was a recommendation on the variance that was requested.
So, that was to a six-foot fence.
So, they might have a different ruling of appropriateness on a revised variance.
But then it feels like we're sort of sending this applicant back and forth, ping-ponging between preservation and zoning board, back to preservation.
We're trying to affect the compromise.
No, I get it. Okay. We're going to do it. We're going to say four feet.
I would just say no higher than the fence that is across the street.
What fence is across the street? Because the fence across the street is six-foot.
On Sheridan?
On Sheridan.
It's on Sheridan across Clark Square Park.
On Sheridan across...okay. So, the 19 through...right, so on Matt's list of 19 through 24, they all have a three-foot wrought iron fence and masonry piers.
Three or four.
There is a three-foot wrought iron fence with five-foot masonry piers, and there is a four-foot wrought iron fence with masonry piers. And there is a three-foot wrought iron fence with six-foot masonry piers. So, the preponderance is three foot. There are a couple of four foot, and the piers are taller.
I'll support the three foot.
There are several four foot and four foot five.
Right.
You know, I...
Can we agree to four-foot piers and five-foot...five-foot piers and this four-foot fence? Do we have consensus...can we get consensus on that? Or do we need consensus on a different number?
I would be amenable to that.
Okay. Lisa? Scott said no. I have one yes for Mary.
Can you repeat that?
Yep. So, the masonry piers at the corners, up to five feet, and the wrought iron fence at four feet.
I would be amenable to that.
The other end?
I agree.
Kirill?
Three foot and four foot piers.
So, okay.
I agree with Kirill.
We don't have any proof that anywhere in the neighborhood, there is a four-foot fence.
I agree with Kirill.
It's like exception.
At 808 Sheridan, there's a four-foot fence.
So, I would say, and I heard a very reasonable request from the neighbors...
From the crowd. I'm sorry.
That they had a previous, I would say, preservation requirement that they keep in sync between them with the fences. And I would prefer to have this as just aesthetic over there. So, I really don't know what's the height of the fences that is predominant in this neighborhood. But I would say that for us, it's safe to say the predominant height.
If there was a requirement from preservation, then I think we could discuss approving the number that preservation requires.
Yep.
And then, the applicant can go to preservation. They'll have to get a certificate of compliance, and it'll be what preservation says is the requirement.
Typically, when staff looks at fence variations for front yards where they are approved, they're typically approved at four feet. I'm not aware of any that we have restricted to less than four feet.
My biggest concern is consistency with the neighborhood, not what we have done in the past when they've been approved.
So, what I've gotten from this board is that there are four people willing to vote for a four-foot fence and a five-foot pier, and two people who will vote for a three-foot fence with a four-foot pier. Is that correct? Okay. So...
Three and a half. Three foot fence with a four-foot pier, not two foot.
No, I said three. Yeah. Three-foot fence with a four-foot pier. Okay. So, whoever makes the motion, pick one of those two, depending on which way you want the vote to go. All right. So, we're going to go through the standards. And the standards is based on one of those two options. Number one, the requested variation will not be materially detrimental to the public welfare or injurious to the use, enjoyment, or property values of adjoining neighborhoods...of adjoining neighbors. My thoughts are not different from the first time we said this, right? Which is what they agreed to, a six-foot fence. However, the four-foot, or three-foot fence, the lower fence, is more consistent with the style in the neighborhood and with the style and scale in the neighborhood. So, I do believe that that standard has been met.
I will say, I think this standard can be met if a fence is put in that is consistent with what's in the neighborhood. And I don't know, as we sit here, what that height is. And so, I'm not comfortable approving one height or the other without knowing that data.
Scott, aren't you...are you not comfortable with the data that's been presented to us here on these front yard fences that show the fences that are joined Clark Square Park?
I would rather have data from the preservation commission than from the applicant's representative.
Okay.
Particularly if it's a subject of a requirement that was imposed on the other neighbors.
Number two, the additional screening, additional height, or requested location achieved through the variation will assist in reducing noise, screening incompatible adjacent uses, or increase safety to the owners of the subject property or abutting properties. A fence, a lower-height fence, but with additional landscape screening, will still be able to assist in reducing the perception of security issues of the subject property. So, I do believe that that standard has been met.
I don't think it's met, but I would support the variation if the...if the result is a fence that's consistent with the neighboring properties.
And number three, in no event shall a variation be granted that would permit a fence taller than 30 inches to be located within 20 feet of the corner curb line of an intersection. That standard is not applicable. So...
I'm going to move in the case of ZBA case 18ZMJV-0059, that we grant a variance to a four-foot fence with five-foot piers along the north property line, the front property line, with the condition that the fence be completed in compliance with the testimony that was presented here in terms of materials. And that's my...that's what I propose.
Hmm, I don't think so. Because that's all right. I need a second. Really, nobody's going to second it. Can I second? I can second? Fine. I'm going to second. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
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 Did I hear you?
I will support that motion.
Okay. With a vote of three to three, you are deadlocked until the next meeting, which is August 28, at which time the last member will decide. You are not required...
Four...I mean...
To come?
Yeah. I don't know that four foot is a magic number, but I would change my vote if we make a different motion that permits a fence at a height that's determined to be consistent with what is in...consistent with the neighborhood.
The hard part of that is staff is suggesting that that's a complication by allowing it to be decided by someone else who doesn't want to make that decision. And we are the deciders. And so, their...staff is asking us to make that decision for them.
The decision you're making doesn't mean...
Yeah.
We don't have the data as to what that height is. We don't have it.
But what we do have is that...
What we do have is, what we do have are fences in several locations that are four, three and a half. I mean, it's pretty darn close. And so, to prevent the additional, you know, bureaucratic steps of going back to preservation and then, you know, and all the rest, I think that that's a pretty close...
So, the data you're pointing to shows that on the immediate block, right where this property is, which is numbers 19 through 24, all of them but one are three feet.
Right, I understand.
One of them, the one...one of them is four.
I understand that. But they are...they form a row of houses, whereas this is across the street on the cul-de-sac. And you wouldn't be able to see much of a difference. So, in my estimation, it's consistent enough.
Okay. That's fine. I'll keep my vote where it is.
Hang on. I'd like to make a...I'd like to make a modification. I think that Melissa and I have come to an agreement on a way that we can let staff settle this in a way that I think might be amenable to Scott, which is that we...the height will be as determined by a zoning administrator based on an average, based on the predominant, the predominant height on Sheridan Road between Main Street and Kedzie. I'm fine with that.
Sure.
Okay. So, can we have another motion with that?
Do we rescind the motion?
Oh, man. We have an open motion? What's the deal? Do we rescind? What do we do? I don't know. We've never done this before.
It's a good motion that results in tie, 3-3. The motion would fail.
Well, it fails pending the last vote.
So, we really can't. We have to leave this to the other ZBA members.
No. She's suggesting we can rescind. Can we rescind? Do we rescind with a motion?
Yes.
Oh, what's his...
I move that we rescind the prior motion and vote.
Mario didn't think we needed to be here.
And consider a different vote.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Let's try this again.
Okay. I'll make the motion. I move in the matter ZBA 18ZMJV-0059, that we approve the zoning relief requested at a height to be determined by the zoning administrator that is the predominant height of other fences on the block of Sheridan Road between Kedzie and Main.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? With a vote of five...four, five, six, six to zero, you're...the modification has been approved. Good luck with your project.
I move that we adjourn the meeting.
Second.
Aye.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?